Did I want to get a chance to sign that? Yeah, I know that. I don't see many of your neighbors here. I mean, I called five or six. Okay, I just don't want... Okay, you know. I just wanted, you know, to be fair to the professionals here.
I'm thinking I'm just gonna stand over here and help TJ.
Okay, we're all set?
I don't think he's much...
Okay, let's follow me in order.
That's right.
Okay, Jay, I guess we'll be starting with D E twelve twenty-nine? Yeah, I'll go through the roll call first. Okay. Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mr. Toll Pepper?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Hesha, Smoos, Mr. Griffiths, Mr. Honeyton?
Resident.
Ms. Peoples?
Here.
Mr. Lightman?
Here.
You have a corner. First, um, item tonight is, uh, we have Wilcox, uh, representing Corral of Tri County to present the traffic impact study. Uh, as you recall, we had a draft presentation last week and gave them directions, come back with some additional information. I personally contacted by phone all of the neighbors that had, uh, attended our meeting last month and, and indicated that we would have the traffic impact study, uh, presented for their information as well as the commission and there would be ability to ask some questions. So, as soon as they're ready to, uh, it gets, gets set up, we'll go through the presentation. Go from there. We'll pass this, we'll go over this real quick, not into the excruciating detail that we went through last week. Most, a couple of you were not here last week, so we wanna make sure we get that plus the res- some of the residents were not here last week either. Um, we, we talked a lot about, um, the detail of this thing last week, which is not probably something you wanna do, but the idea here was to identify the traffic impacts that would be associated with building a Golden Corral restaurant on this site versus, say, having it been off in the past. And, um, there's a standard accepted practice methodology that's used all over the country to figure this stuff out. So, we, we, uh, we followed that practice. We also obtained the scope of work of which intersections need to be studied, all that kind of information, plus some backgrounded traffic information from the city and information that came from Golden Corral. And, uh, the scope kind of came from a lot of concerns from planning commission and from residents' concerns, so that's how we ended up with the intersections that we studied and the approach that we took to, uh, coming up with the answers to the study. There's a couple of things that, um, that come out of this that I think are important, that, uh, there was really no significant traffic impact. Um, the, uh, there were a couple of things that we found that could, that are existing problems that should be kinda looked at or, and/or fixed with, um, with or without the Golden Corral there. And that involved maybe kinda creating a better lane on the westbound approach of the intersection at Edwards, so you can have right turns without having to drive over kind of a poorly, poor-conditioned shoulder kinda thing. No, I mean, um, well, maybe that's... Um, there's a, uh, there's also a, a no-left turn sign that is in the opposite... Is that our point? Yeah, that's your point. There's a no-left, uh, there's a driveway kinda like right here on the opposite side of, of Southfield that, um, has a faded, very faded no-left turn sign that oughta get replaced because the proximity of the two drives is not a good one and you really, this, this turn has been prohibited for a long time, it's just that the sign's not very good. And we recommended that that be, uh, be replaced. We also recommended that if, if, when you do build this, this access, that you get, you build the access consistent with the road commissions', um, design standards, which, um, they have specifics about how wide it's supposed to be, the radius is, what it's supposed to be made out of, the grades on it and all that. There's a, uh, section in here that talks about the vehicle trips and we're gonna talk about trips, we're talking new trips are gonna come from this in comparison to either what's there today or what was there, or, uh, how they're gonna be distributed throughout the day based on this use versus, say, an office use. And, uh, we, we went through that a little bit, we're gonna talk about that again tonight because we had some, some questions about that last time, that, uh, for example, we didn't have a comparison of, uh, existing, in other words, if it's built as office versus what are you gonna have if it's Golden Corral? We didn't have that in the study, we had that tonight, so... Well, we have that, we have that too, and we've, that's, that's in another section of this, I mean, we, we have a specific PowerPoint that we put together addressing all of the questions that we had from last week that were not part of the, the presentation, but I'm just trying to kinda gloss over the study to the extent, uh, we can to kinda familiarize the people that weren't here last week. Uh, but we do have answers to all that. There's a, uh, a methodology that allows you to determine how, how well an intersection processes the traffic by, by giving it a grade A through F, it's called level of service. You can calculate that, um, again, that's a standard calculation that you can go through, um, and right now, they, uh, you'll notice in the, if, when you look at the report, there's midday and PM peak hour, and the fact of the matter is, is that overall, the intersection of Southfield and Edwards operates at level service A, pretty low, uh, overall level of service, but you have two approaches that are not operating too well, and the reason they are is because the traffic signal has to get in step with the signal that's at Twelve Mile Road, there's not a lot of demand on these two approaches, east and westbound, but when you get there, there's a real good chance that you have to wait so that the signal gets in step with the one at Twelve Mile Road, so that adds to the delay. See, I don't know if there's...
Just through the chair, Mike, you just wanna identify what that means is fifty seconds...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Talk about what, what those numbers really mean.
These, these are delay per vehicle, fifty seconds of delay per vehicle, so fifty-eight point three, fortunately, so a little bit, when you get to, um, about a minute of this level of service E, which is kind of capacity, but that's, there's not really a capacity, but delays there are being imposed on it because of its need for the signal to stay in step with the one at Twelve Mile Road so that you can maintain progressive movement of the vehicles on Twelve Mile, or, uh, I'm sorry, on Southfield. The platoon movements, if you drive, drive the speed limit, you usually can make the lights if you stay, now, it doesn't always work, but when real peak times get there, they get overcapacity, it doesn't work, but the reason, those two signals need to operate together, otherwise you're gonna end up with vehicles caught, traffic caught in between Edwards and Twelve Mile, which is not what you want, you want that to kinda clear out so the driveways can, people can get out of the driveways, but in order to do that, they have to stay in step, and that increases the delay on the cross streets.
And if you could also explain through the chair, A is, is a level of service that is ideal, but D is lesser, but it's still a passing grade, so if you could just explain...
Right, okay.
What, what is passing?
In a, in an urban area like Southfield, in, in, in most places, a level of service D is considered acceptable, A is the best. A lot of times you don't, roads are not, intersections are not designed for level service A, they're actually, they'll go to, look, to have them at level service C or D, is what you design it for, which, I don't know if that makes a lot of sense to you, but that's what happened, turns out to be the best use of public funds and a lot of other things, but that, that bottom, the bottom line is, A is ideal, it's, in other words, it's a very low, uh, delay and it's almost usually an indication that you really don't have any problem.
Can I ask a question? Am I allowed to?
Uh, you can ask it through the chair, but I, if you could, can we wave the left? You'll get the opportunity. Does anyone mind writing it down?
Some, if you wanna kinda click through TJ to maybe figure four, we, we had a, uh, or figure three, these are existing traffic counts, so, the, uh, oh, can you show, can you get this on at the same time and show that? Okay. These numbers, this is the midday number and that's the PM peak hour number, these are existing traffic volumes during an, for a whole entire hour that make that particular movement at that intersection. This is figure three in the, uh, in the study, or in the report. So, you notice you don't have a lot of traffic, that, these are, these are very low numbers and, to be honest, if you had these kinds of numbers consistently, it's questionable whether the signal's more, that's another story. Whereas the volumes on Southfield Road are real high, that's why, when you come up here, this thing's activated, waits until it gets in step with the one down at Twelve Mile. But those are the existing counts, so the numbers are pretty low on Edwards and, uh, the driveway cross street. The next group of numbers is, uh, our twenty-four hour traffic volumes, some of these are, heck, actually, most of these we got from the, uh, City Gate leads to us, so, um, we have a... The top, the top number is two thousand and eleven, which these were taken in August of two thousand and eleven, and the bottom number is June of two thousand and two. The question last week was, these are stark differences, was, was school in session? Well, it turns out, and we have, we have a comparison of this in, in the PowerPoint later, but it turns out the school was in session in two thousand and two when those counts were taken. Okay? Uh, but we'll talk about that later. These differences are not explained by school being in session, they're, they're a small component of the difference, just as, just for food for thought as we, when we get further along here. So, these are pretty low twenty-four hour volumes too, um, exception, these, that number, these numbers up here are back in, are fairly high, but a good rule of thumb number for a two-way volume on a residential street, that max number is like two thousand a day. You have, you're, you're still under the two thousand, but that's, you're getting close. But now the volumes are quite a bit lower, so, it was something to look at, traffic volumes on the streets in, in the immediate vicinity are significantly lower than they were back, back in the day.
Look, question, you should let, I was just wondering, are these numbers that are like new, or can do a lot of this right here?
Nope, they're, those are just daily volumes that they take, as long as you pick out a good day, the right day, a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, it's, it's a pretty random, they're usually fairly accurate, and usually, with, with just some exceptions, it doesn't really matter whether school's in session or not. In this particular instance though, a school is, is fairly close to these, this location, so, you know, maybe it has something to do with it, but generally speaking, um, twenty-four hour counts, they really don't care when you take them, sometimes they have to be adjusted a little bit for, uh, proximity to school or proximity to a large generator like a factory or something like that where a lot of people come up, but it's not, uh, you just don't have to.
I apologize for not being here last week, and this may be a dungeon, but are you, since Edmonds is a one-way, are you telling me that the second number is two thousand and two number? Are you telling me on a given day in two thousand and two, that Edmonds has one thousand three hundred and eighty-two, let's say, vehicles going up Danah Street on a given day?
Yes. But it's one way that direction, one way westbound?
Yeah.
But, but that twenty-seven number is people who are legally going the wrong way?
Yeah, I wasn't down there yet, yeah. I understand, it wasn't down there, that's the top, I was good there.
Okay.
Okay, was at the top at thirteen eighty-two, on a given day, Edmonds got traffic going that way.
Over twenty-four hours.
Two thousand and two, yeah.
Right, over twenty-four hour period.
I understand what you're saying, that then at the bottom, that means that you had twenty-seven vehicles going the wrong way, okay, wasn't at that, that's a lot of traffic one way, that's, that's my thought on this.
But, but it's interesting, it's twenty-seven going the wrong way in two thousand and eleven, and twenty-seven in two thousand and two, so it's the same twenty-seven people?
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
But the important number up there also is that, that six forty-one were going in two thousand and eleven, it's gone down almost fifty percent, and it can't all be attributed to just school or non-school, which, which Michael gets to later.
Oh, yeah, that was my point, like I said, that was my point is that, and I wasn't looking at the people going the wrong way.
Yeah.
But I was concerned that that much traffic in two thousand and two, two, going on Edmonds, that's a lot of traffic.
Over twenty-four hours.
Yeah, yeah. Well, look what you had in two thousand and, and eleven, you had five ninety-nine, and that's almost double, to make it... Five ninety-nine is, is the traffic in two thousand and eleven, correct?
Yes, uh-huh.
And thirteen eighty-two is what you had in two thousand and two.
Correct. So, it's half, half as much.
Uh-huh.
And...
Question, through the chair.
Mr. Peoples?
Was an office building functioning in two thousand and two?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Potential, and we talked about that too, where, uh, an office workers, um, come to the same place every day, they tend to find the path of least resistance because they have an opportunity to experiment, and it suits them to do that, whereas, um, in a restaurant or even a retail store, where it's, you come there once in a while, you're not hunting for short, you know, the shortest route to there or whatever, you're not doing that usually.
I'm just saying that they, if an office building wasn't functioning, that would, uh, gives some reason of the traffic.
Yeah, we have some numbers for that too, it, that fairly helps too, but it, it's another addition to the number, you're right.
Yeah, 'cause I'm, I'm quite surprised about the, the twenty-seven people, uh, going the wrong way on the one-way.
Yeah.
Because I would have, I would have assumed that, uh, the, the fact that the count was done after the office building burned down, uh, in two thousand and eleven, where it actually burned, burned down in two thousand and ten. But the, the count going the wrong way is the exact same number as it was in two thousand and two, when the office building was open.
It's residence, it's residence.
Exactly, and so, and so, a business down at the corner is not generating wrong-way, wrong-way traffic.
No, that's, well, that's, that's a very good point. Now, that's, that's getting my license, like...
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we could do that. Would be my guess, they may have done that back in the day, so I don't know. Um, move on TJ to the, the trip generation, if you can, scroll up to that, we, we have some more discussion about this in the, in the PowerPoint later, but these are the, these are the, remember, peak hour, those, those of you that weren't here, the study, the impact study is based on peak hours, not daily traffic or anything like that. It's, so this is midday, it's kinda lunchtime, and this is the PM, and you're studying it because the volumes on the adjacent roads are pretty high, or higher during those times, so that would be the time when your impact would be the greatest, potentially, because the roadways at those times are operating in a forest. It is not necessarily the, the peak time for the generator, in other words, the, the highest time of the day when, or the highest day of the year, or whatever it is, that the restaurant would generate traffic. This is the amount of traffic that it generates during the adjacent street peak hour. We have information about how these, how well these correlate, and what the peak days are and all that for Golden Corral later. This is the average daily, so you have the number of people that come in and out, number of cars, this is a, this is an in and out number, fifteen thirty-two.
Total for the day or...
Day, for the day, total in and out, so divided in half is really the new trips that, the trips that are generated. And remember, this, this business about passed by too, forty-three percent of the trips that come to the, to a restaurant like this are already out on the street. They're there, they're not new trips out on the street. The, the traffic that's out there is bringing them in, but the new trips, this is the total number of new trips that you, you're gonna end up with, give or take, uh, with this type of development. So, now, if you have the new trips, you have to assign it to the, to the, uh, to the roadways and the intersection, uh, you'll look, when you look in the report, those are the percentage directions of approach, so, um, you know, we can go through that, we need to know where we, where you put these new numbers so that you can figure out the impact on each of the movements, so that you can evaluate the difference between level of service before and level of service after, and then you compare well, is there, is there a significant difference, or is any difference? That, that, that part where we talked about level of service, you know, A through F kinda thing. And we've, we, we can skip through all these, these graphics and things, turns out though, that there's a, there we go, future operations, if you remember, these were D's and this was A, this, this went up two seconds overall, uh, that went up about two seconds overall, not, this is a no-impact tenant scenario based on level of service.
I'll bring up the comparison.
Yeah, we've got a, in our PowerPoint, there's another, there's a comparison of this, so you can see, see the two side by side, we talked about that last week too. Um, in the report, there's something about, uh, traffic queue lengths, and, um, we're gonna talk about that a little bit too, but, um, the average queue length for a, one of the approaches, these are in feet, and there's an average, and then there's a ninety-fifth percentile, that says that there's only five percent of the queues during a certain time of day that are actually longer than that number, and so, if you're beating this number, if you, if you comply with this number, you're doing a lot better than even the design would necessarily ask you to do, but this is the average queue, but in feet, cars about, you should use about twenty feet for a car, so you can see you don't have very many cars sitting in queue either. That's pretty much it, we talked about it in a lot more detail last time, but I don't know if we need to, if you have questions or you wanna talk about some detail, like, you know, if you...
Through the chair, you said you had a PowerPoint addressing some of the questions?
Oh, yeah, we have a PowerPoint addressing all of them.
Okay, so if, if you wanna go through that, then, then we'll open it back to the commissioners for further questions.
Okay. Um, for those of you that were not here last week, there were questions from the commissioners, and there were questions, a couple of questions from the, some folks that were from the audience, that, um, indirectly or directly were, were part of the, the study, but to make it, give you better detail and a better understanding of it, or to make it easier to understand, we've kinda put it into a PowerPoint where we can address that. So, this is the first one where you compared, um, existing and future and existing and future, in other words, we had the level of service today and the level of service with the Golden Corral, that's, so this is the midday, the lunchtime, uh, it goes from six point eight to eight point four, these numbers are, you won't find that table in the report, you have to look at two tables to figure that out.
Do you have, uh, copies of that? I mean, did you...
We can give those to you if you want. No, we didn't bring that, but that's a, that's a full power on our part, I'm sorry about that, we, we'll, we'll get those to you.
Just sort them to me and I'll make sure they...
Uh, through the chair, uh, this is, at the intersection of Southfield and Edwards, uh, I'm, I'm not sure, is, is this traffic count on, or according to, of the, of Edwards?
It's the intersection. It's this intersection that's controlled by a traffic signal, it's this approach? This is, this approach, this approach to that approach.
I was just looking at the eastbound and westbound, I forgot that there were two more lines there.
That's okay. So, the, the eastbound approach, which would be the one across, on the west side of the street, remember, we talked about why those were level service D and E is because of not the traffic demand, we, we know the traffic was low, but the fact that this signal has to get in step with this signal.
No, I don't have any problem with that, it, because, because the, the volume on, on Edwards is going to be so low that, uh, as compared to the people on, going east and west on Twelve Mile Road, uh, you, it's much worse on Twelve Mile Road because, you know, the traffic's backed up far enough that they can't get through in one light.
Sometimes, right.
I've been, I live in the area and I've been there where I've had thirteen light changes.
Oh, my goodness, well, that's, that's, uh, twelve times level of service F.
Maybe a bit.
It's not good, needs, that needs to be fixed.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Am I understanding this, Mike, again, uh, overall, six point eight is now, and going to the future, you're gaining say two point four seconds of delay?
Overall, for the whole intersection, when you, when you weight these overall, this tells you that the intersection is operating at a level of service A today.
Today.
It's gonna, it's still operating at level service A, overall, you're adding two point four seconds.
You only add two point four seconds?
Okay, yeah, not even, yeah, two point four. So, it's, that's a negligible impact, stop delay per vehicle, that's what that means.
Mike, what is the lowest rating? I see, you said D acceptable, is D the lowest, or F the lowest?
F, level service F is, right, the lowest, what's that total, that number?
Eighty seconds of going per vehicle.
How much?
Eighty.
That's why I do that call in, commissioner.
Oh, no, it's longer than that.
It's much, much more severe than that.
Yeah, it's much more severe than that.
What was that number?
Eighty seconds of stop delay per vehicle. It seems like an eternity if you sit there a minute, so, just so you know, that, it feels uncomfortable, but there are days that I come out of my, my subdivision street, I live in Troy intersection on the Long Square Lake Road, and the cars can have big gap, but I sit there, sit there, sit there, sit there, level service D or E all the time, if I'm leaving in the morning at say seven o'clock, it's a pain in the neck, and it's, there's not a lot of cars out there, but it's still that way.
F is the lowest acceptable?
No.
F is just bad period?
Yeah, right, you try to do something if you fix, if you have level service E and F.
So, that's just one sound from D, D is acceptable, then F is not?
E and D, E and, E and F are not acceptable.
E and F is not acceptable?
If you can, if there's a legitimate problem.
The D and above is acceptable, that's what I'm...
Now, should you fix, in our case, in this particular intersection case, you don't wanna try to fix the problem because it's not a problem. You, the computer has to figure out, it has to account for that keeping in step business. The odds are that, that's not, you're not really waiting there that long, but you have to model it the way, that's all, and, uh, but if you went, go down to Twelve Mile and Southfield, yes, you'd find a, a kind of a different answer if you did that, you'd probably find some problems there, uh, that society, we've decided some of those are not, we're not gonna fix them, and frankly, they're probably have gotten better over the years and they haven't done anything else, the same signal operation is there, they've added the cameras, but they used to have loops, so... So...
The main thing the cameras have improved on is, is, is when, when the volume of traffic is much less. Like after eleven o'clock at night, uh, with the cameras there, you don't sit there for about thirty seconds, and, and before it changes.
Right. These are the numbers, just so you know, that, of that stop delay per vehicle, so. Maybe that helps. Okay, the, the counts, remember the dramatic differences in the twenty-four hour counts on that one, one graphic, which maybe we, we might wanna reference these as, we're kinda going through, if you wanna make notes, in case you wanna look at it later. Which is, um, figure four in the study. Uh, it's, the differences are dramatic, I mean, I mean, they're half or so, give or take. Well, first question came up was, uh, at, was school in session? Well, it turns out school was in session for the, uh, the June count in oh-two. And in the counts taken in oh, in, in two thousand and eleven, school was not in session. So, there is some traffic in there related to the school. There's also some traffic in there related to the office building in two thousand and two. But the differences are, are nowhere near, student would account for the total number of trips, this is the student enrollment back in the day, TJ figured this out, the total number of trips for, in all the directions from the school, would be five hundred and sixteen trips. Here, and I, you have a whole lot more of that difference in just one of the movements, let alone all of them going in various directions. Certainly not all of it. Now, there's another part of this, too, is that westbound Edwards, west of Lathrum. Here's Lathrum, westbound. There is a peak in here, after six. And so, does that, what, what does that say? Does that tell you that, this is the, this is the two thousand and two, this is the two thousand and eleven? Well, depending upon what time they get to the elementary school, yeah, maybe. But they're usually a little, is, is this like seven o'clock or eight o'clock, might be some, but it's also, there's other traffic in there. It's not a proportion of the five hundred and sixteen daily trips.
Through the chair, if, if you look at it throughout the day as well, it, there's a, there's a difference from two thousand and, um, two to two thousand and eleven consistently, except for the peak, which is much more dramatic. And then if you look at eastbound, you see that slip in the afternoon.
And it's six o'clock in the evening.
Much later.
What do you mean, a lot more people retired? A lot more people live in Chicago now or something, too, I mean, I don't know, who knows? But the numbers are dramatically different, uh, so life is a little bit better on those streets today than it was back in two thousand and two. That's kinda the bottom line, that, it turns out that you could try to refine it even more, but we've already probably spent more time on it than we needed to on this already.
Through the chair?
No.
Can I read?
Yeah.
Just a comment, going back to that chart, so...
Which one?
I think it could be the office people going home, obviously, and just not that office, you know, local offices are on there, same people using those streets, coming to work and going home.
Could be.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
It's possible, uh, but it's, it's eastbound, east of Lathrum, so, they'd have to come up off of Twelve Mile Road or something, or, because we didn't find that many, not a huge number of violators between, but, and it's six o'clock, which is a little, a little bit late for, for the people that are in the office building. I'm not saying that they're all, you know, it's just hard to, there's a conglomeration. I think there's just a lot of cars there off the road season around here, and that's, this is the only place we see this kinda stuff going on. There's some dramatic differences in a lot of, a lot of places we've looked at counts in the last year or so, so.
Through the, eastbound Edwards, east, oh, east of Lathrum, so, so it's not going, it's not the one, one way, wrong way?
Right, well, it could, some of it could advance, I don't know. But that, that, right, the number you're looking at is, it was four eighty-five, and now it's one fifty-eight.
Right.
There was a, it's some discussion about, um, trip generation, and whether, you know, Golden Corral's gonna make any money, and stuff like that. We needed a comparison of how we forecast the trips versus what, what Golden Corral can do, and where, where were we in that forecast, was this forecast credible, all that kinda stuff. And we were able to get some information from, um, well, no, I just wanna tell them where we're going with this. We were, we were able to get some information from Golden Corral to help us forecast what they're actually gonna do, uh, based on some of their, a couple of other stores. This is the difference in office. We kinda guesstimated it at forty-five thousand square feet, 'cause it was a one-story office building, right?
Yep.
If I remember correctly, and about forty-five thousand. Again, you can go to the, to, uh, the Trip Generation Handbook and forecast those trips, and be real close with that number based on an office building. So, the, the difference really is only in the daily, and the interesting part of it is, it's Golden Corral has turnover. People are there, they're not there all day, eating, they're there for an hour or so, at the most, and it turns over. So you end up with more trips here, but the peak numbers are not dramatically different during the worst times of the day. Kind of the bottom line. We talked a little bit about, just a few minutes ago, but the other day we talked also about the peak hour of the generator, not the peak hour of adjacent street traffic. So you, there are some more trips that could be, um, forecasted, and possibly it's gonna be higher, but that's when the traffic on the adjacent roads is a lot lower. So, kinda from a traffic planning standpoint, if you can avoid things that are gonna generate a lot of trips during the worst times of the adjacent roads, that's a good thing to do. So, if you have a restaurant that generates, certainly generates trips, if you can have that, their worst case is not when it's, say, an office building, or even a residential development. The worst case for those is when the adjacent roads are the worst, in this case it's not.
Uh, if I could, through the chair, on, on that slide, and, and your comment. And as I recall, last week, uh, you stated that the people that come to, uh, I forgot the kinda restaurant it is.
Buffet.
Buffet, so, thank you. Uh, uh, come early, which means to me, five, five to seven, as far as eating, or even four to seven, and which is pretty much the rush hour. And so, a lot of the main traffic going there for the evening meal to, to this type of restaurant would be at the same time as, as your high-volume going-home traffic.
I, I don't disagree with that, that's true, I, I mean, that's...
I think to be optimistic about what you just said.
No, what I'm saying is that the worst time, the time when a Golden Corral generates the most trips is not that four to six weekday PM peak hour, no, it isn't. No, well, we, we can go on, we can go on, we can show, we can show you. We've got data from them, these are, these are forecasts based on ITE. Let's look at what their, what the information from the Golden Corral shows something a little different. Uh, midday and PM, uh, this, these are the numbers that were forecasted by, based on the information we got from, um, the Golden Corral, where they have, they, they estimate that they have two point two five people per vehicle, and that would be, um, based on that, and how many, how much activity they actually had, and, and was it, just one site, or two sites, or one? One site, but it's recent, right, relatively recent information. These are the inbound trips, this is what they forecast in vehicle, or they, they, they're, this has been their experience, this is what we forecast. So it's, is it verified, it's kinda conservative, actually, our numbers are a little higher than what they're showing. So, uh, and it comes from sales receipts and experience in the, in their, in their store.
Through the chair, yeah, I'm, I'm kinda confused, too, because we'll say the high-peak hours on Edmonds and, and Southfield at that area is from five to six, that's where that area is at peak. And I'm in line with Commissioner Bell, this one. Those are, that four to six hours assumes to be the same time that people would be coming into the Golden Corral.
I'm not, I guess I'm not disagreeing.
But those numbers don't say that.
No, I think, if I could, correct me if I'm wrong, through the chair.
I don't understand those numbers.
Is that, based on the data from the transportation engineers, you come up with an average, but based on the actual sales receipts of the store, which they plugged in, which is, is more correct for this particular use, their actual sales numbers are less than what we forecasted during the peak hours.
Okay.
So, it's, what I think he's saying is, is not as bad as, as...
Did numbers say the odds?
Yeah, it could be, it could have been worse, but it's actually, the actual numbers of forecast based on actual sales is, is not.
I'm sorry, I may have kinda confused that, but there's another kind of aspect of this, is that this is their peak day, which is Mother's Day. And, um, one of the things that I guess, kinda have to keep in mind, is that, let's say, the difference between what we used and the worst day, what impact would that have on the level of service? You probably wouldn't be able to measure it, it wouldn't make any difference.
Putting it the way you put it, uh, so I understand, that the numbers didn't seem to do the job what you were saying, it, I don't...
And here's another thing, too, is that you don't, these studies, you don't look at the worst day possible, you never do that. You look at, what, what traditionally are you going to expect? And it's a typical kinda, typical kinda weekday operation. You don't study shopping centers at Christmas time, unless you're trying to figure out how much parking you need. But you don't study them and say, oh, gosh, this is gonna be terrible. Well, Somerset traffic backs up all the way to the freeways, I-75 sometimes in, during Christmas season. And you don't see that any other time, you know, around Thanksgiving and Christmas, you just don't see that other, regardless. So, um, we felt pretty good that our forecast was, was conservative, and basically kinda verified where, where we thought we were gonna be, with, based on the experience from them. Now, here's another thing, too, is that the traditional and accepted practice approach to studying this, well, not necess, if, if we had an awful lot of information, and, and they had, we had some sort of unique, uh, use, that maybe IT didn't have that information, but there's so many more studies with similar kinds of restaurants that are in, in ITE, that, that wouldn't necessarily, you wouldn't necessarily use that information from Golden Corral the way we did in this case. But we're just trying to help you verify that what we did was, was good, and that, uh, we're clearly in the ballpark on forecasting the traffic. We, we tried to make this not so blurry, but we tried, we also tried to explain this last week, and it was not, was not real good, uh, in the sense it was difficult for people to understand. So this is an aerial, this is the office building before it burned down, do we get this off of Google or someplace, I don't know. So this is Edwards Street here. The yellow is the location of the new driveways shown on the site plan. And, um, this white is the existing driveway, based on the, the office building being there. This is the driveway that's cut a kidney corner across, that has the left turn prohibited, that we, we recommended prohibiting the left turn. Our left turn coming out, this left turn, is also, we're committing to prohibiting that. And so the question is, there was some, there's this driveway, which we talked about, and then this driveway that came up in the, uh, in the subsequent discussion with some of the folks that were in the, in the audience. And the issue there was, with the driveway here, is this suddenly being severely impacted by this driveway being located here? That was one issue that came up. We actually have improved that, if you look at it, 'cause the distance is quite a bit different, it's over a hundred feet further away. This left turn is already prohibited, we allow this left turn, that's our left turn of the new site. So this has gotten better, not worse. Now, this distance right here, this fifty-four feet, if you look in the study, that, that's the queue, ninety-fifth percentile, traffic queue in feet, of the traffic demand that's gonna be here making that, that left turn. So it's almost the worst-case scenario, left turn, it's only fifty-four feet, 'cause that volume's not very much, at the traffic signal-controlled intersection. We're allowing this left, that left prohibited, we're prohibiting that left, this is all the scale, so it's not, so you all have a, kind of a picture of how it's gonna operate, except this driveway is going away.
Through the chair? Just as, as a wrinkle, and I don't know if you discarded this when your, your discussions for road commission for Oakland County, but on the drawing board, at some, sometime near future, they're proposing to put a landscape meeting in, which would eliminate the southbound left turn turn, right?
Maybe, well, it might, but...
I mean, there might be a Michigan left, but...
Indirect left, yeah.
Right, um, wouldn't that even improve the conditions further than what they are?
Oh, well, that's gonna eliminate all the problems, because you won't be able to get in here, it's gonna get rid of all that stuff.
I just, I, it was brought up, um, by our deputy city administrator, and it should probably be mentioned somewhere in the report.
Okay.
Okay, just as a possible, but I just wanted to mention that for your...
Some people agree with that, but that's ten to fifteen years down the road.
They, it's still, uh, I don't know if it's that far out, Mr. Bell, based on...
I'm just going by what's last I heard.
They're working on the design, I know that much, from Commissioner...
Well, they, they think it was, it was ready, ready to be built, and then the bomb fell out of the economy, and all of a sudden, I'm understanding it was pushed back another ten years.
However, just again, um, we have, we're going through the environmental review process, and the city has been asked to participate in the public hearing. So, even though I would have agreed with you a few months ago, they're actively going through the environmental assessment, so our engineers have been attending those meetings. And when I discussed that this traffic impact study was presented, it's a made sure that, that is least noted for the record, and that it's discussed, and that's why I'm taking it up.
I would welcome it being reduced, I'd love for it to happen next year.
The, the last thing, I guess, that comes out of this, is that this is the location of the driveway on Edwards, which is gonna line up, although it's blurry, and I apologize for that, it's gonna line up with the driveway to the commercial site on the, on the south side of Edwards. So, um, I guess the only other, there was one other thing about this, right, TJ? Was the, the southbound, yeah, the, the analysis of this driveway shows that we'll have a queue of one car there. So, that's a car there in, in perspective, and the scale showing you what you're gonna have. Remember, this is already prohibited, that left turn into there. This is our left turn going into here, people, there's no, there's no conflict with the maximum queue here, and we've actually significantly improved the operation to get into there.
That, uh, through the chair, that was, that's why I was asking for you to bring that like that.
I know, it's great.
In my mind, it seemed like moving the driveway down is gonna make it a better situation, and I see that.
Yeah, it was great you did that, and it's, we probably should have done that, and maybe...
And if you could, uh, make sure, I don't know if we'll get it, but comfortable with it, you need to make sure you have that, like you gave us this?
As an addendum?
All those different things, yeah, add to, because I thought you were gonna have them for us today, you know, to change it. Through the chair? Again, I apologize for not being here last week, we probably discussed this. Am I understanding the white is current? And the yellow is what's proposed?
Yes.
Read this for us, that's, that was, that was where we started going.
The only thing is, is that, this is...
The yellow is what I was talking about, to, to make it more convenient, and you know, to get in and out of there without disturbing Southfield.
Right.
And that's where the, the yellow is at, you know, that, that, yeah, that's where...
Just so you know, this is gonna go away, though, this one.
Yeah, I understand, but like I said, but my concern is that, that the white is what's currently there with the boys, but they... but the yellow is what will be there if this proposal goes through.
Yes.
And that was what we were looking at, to make sure that we didn't construct a screw-up, twelve Southfield Road, that, that's perfect.
Right, okay.
In my mind.
Through the chair, uh, I can't read the numbers that are placed, uh, I guess it's to the blue and the red hash.
This is seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
One hundred and seventy from there to there.
Okay, which means seventy-two from a hundred and seventy is what you've got in the red hash?
Yeah, that's the additional, you're adding about a hundred feet to that, that, that separation.
Okay.
By bringing it down to the center line of.
What I'm getting at is, is that I, I know for a fact that there's as many as five or six cars at a time in the turn lane, the left turn lane going north to turn, uh, west. Uh, and, and that's, that's up to a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty feet of stacked cars.
Turning to go into here?
Yes.
Well, we're helping it then.
Well, you're helping it, but it's not solving the problem, is what I'm getting at. Uh, the problem i- is that you've got a hundred, up to a hundred and fifty feet of, of, of center turn lane that is completely blocked here at certain times of the day. And when you've got a hundred and fifty feet of it blocked, how much of it has, is left to, to make, to get into the turn lane and turn left, uh, going east?
Okay, well, like I said, the analysis shows the queue is going to be one vehicle, so you only need twenty feet.
Well, it takes more than twenty feet to get into a turn lane and sit there.
Is there a conflict, and the question I guess is, maybe we have to figure this out, but we don't have data for this turn. We didn't figure that driveway out. City staff, no, no one thought that was.
I don't have data for it either, except what I've been told and what I've observed personally.
Okay, well, um, that we can't, I can't answer how, what kind of a challenge you might have with that.
Is it, is this an office use now, is what my understanding is?
Well, it's an office use and part of that, half of that office building is a school. There's a lot of, entirely drop off and pickup.
My, my thought and the reason I asked, posed that question is that if it is an office, then the incoming traffic that would be in that turn lane, most likely in the morning, when the closed use is not active.
That's not accurate, the cars are the use of the office building.
Right. So, we don't have an information for that, maybe we need to have it before we get there next Monday, I don't know. Uh, we could probably figure that out.
Yeah, and through the chair, again, it's, it's a simple, like, it's, the layperson's common sense. You've got so much people coming southbound trying to turn left into the restaurant, so many people going northbound trying to turn left into that driveway.
Yes.
There's only so much space that they can stack one way or the other.
Right.
The concern that was raised last week was the potential for head-on collision.
Right.
And bottom line is, by, you know, uh, whatever hook or crook, if you can figure out by next week, and you, you already probably know your gut, but is this, you know, are we creating a worse situation? Is it a safe, is it within tolerable limit? Is, is the conflict, uh, perceived, but it's, it's real, it's not real because of the flowing and out during the morning, PM and stuff? That, that's, I guess, the, the gist of this issue.
Well, well, the issue, the way I see it, is that taking this, taking this driveway, moving it down here, adding an extra hundred feet of storage for people to come into this site, versing having it up here,
There's no question that it's true. I'm just saying that it doesn't eliminate the problem.
No, it doesn't eliminate it.
Okay, that's, that's it, that's all I'm saying and, and therefore my recommendation is to ride in and ride out only.
Oh, I see. Hmm, I don't know if I agree with that, but we'll, we'll figure it out and see if you feel better about it next week, or two weeks. Because we need to know that demand.
Is there something more that we're going to, uh, for me to analyze?
No, you brought this up tonight, we didn't under, know that you were going to be concerned about that.
Weeks.
Well, I didn't know that you were, that that was an issue for you. We, we thought we were saying.
I went out there and stepped it off, uh, when I first got the plan. I've got it marked right here on my, on my old plan. I've been knowing this for weeks and tried to point it out to the commission, but in one ear and out the other.
Well, I'll get a little more solid information on whether you and I are on the same side on that one or not. Okay? We'll have, we'll have a, we'll look at that and see if we, if we're making it. We can't eliminate the problem, otherwise you can, eliminate access for everybody and the life gets real good. But on the other hand, we are doing all we can to, one, allow the property owner to have access, they have a right to access. And two, have we shown that there's any operational issues that are out there? And we're saying, well, there might be, so we're, but we're improving it. We don't have to fix it, we have to improve it or not in, make it worse. In our case, we're improving it, we're not making it worse. So that's kind of the way.
Commissioner, great this year, of course.
Yeah, um, I see you're improving the distance and that helps. You had some stats, half the traffic I believe came from the north and half came from the south.
Yeah, we have a.
So I mean, just eliminating traffic that's coming from the north is just an undue burden, I think.
We're not eliminating, you've got a traffic light a hundred feet to the south.
Well, you'd have to go down to.
Have to go down to the traffic light and go in it.
You have to go down through here and then go in here.
Which makes it all safe.
I just, I agree with that, but it's in a much better condition than it was.
Oh, there's no question that it improves it.
And, I mean, we could, you could eliminate because this is on the other side of the street.
Right, it's, it's, as long as you're not making it worse and, uh, you're doing something to improve the situation, that's what you should be doing.
Let me clarify what you're saying. Hey Roy, so what you're saying is, uh, a right turn only onto Edwards, you get into the restaurant?
No, it'd be a right in, right out for this driveway is what you're saying.
A right, right in, uh, to the driveway on Southfield Road, make it a right turn in only and right turn out only. No left-hand turns to get into.
No left-hand turns. He wants that left hand, he thinks this southbound left turn should be eliminated.
Right.
And we, we disagree.
Oh, so you're saying if you're coming from, uh, north going south, you need to turn into Edwards?
Right.
Okay.
And then if you want to, if you want to go south when you exit, go out the Edwards exit at the light and turn south.
Okay, so let's, let's move on, we might have a little bit more, uh, fuel for, or maybe put a little bit of salt on this one or a little bit of sugar, I don't know. Um, we looked at reported accidents over the most recent three years where accidents have been reported to determine whether or not there's been an issue out there. Particularly with the kind of accident you're talking about. And one of the folks from the last, last week. Um, so this is a three-year, this is a traditional way to look at an accident problem too. You get three years, that's a statistically significant period. So this is a proper analysis, the accepted practice, just how you would look at it, of reported accidents. In that area, there's, there's an average of ten crashes a year. And eighty-three percent of them are property damage only. Fourteen are C injury, there was one B injury. C is that, is an injury, but it's, uh, not an incapacitating injury. A B injury is getting a little worse, somebody might have bumped their elbow on the, and the next one, and a B injury, they, they might have bumped their elbow, but it was bleeding. When it's incapacitating, that would be A. They didn't have any of those. And there were no fatalities. Sixty-two percent of all the accidents were rear-end accidents at the signal. The signals promote rear-end accidents. You're supposedly giving up rear ends for what they are, maybe left turn type accidents. Uh, no reported center lane head-on accident at all out there. So, the issue that we're trying to address or that we're all trying to design our brains out on this thing is, is not, it's not there. And has, it wasn't there when the driveways were real close and the peak volumes were.
The, the exit coming out of the office building, the one that you're doing away with, has a sign added that says exit only.
I understand. But we, our big thing was the center lane, there was a big issue about accidents in the center lane, there haven't been any. That's all.
Well, by, by being exit only, it eliminates the, the southbound traffic turning left.
I understand.
Okay.
But we were, we were trying to deal with the driveway that was a little further north on the west side and the so-called chaos that was going to happen in the center lane for left turn, which it turns out that's not happening. Or hasn't happened in the last three years. Is that it?
No.
Yeah, that's it. We will give you all copies of this.
Through me.
Through you. Do you want us to print them for you or you just want to send your data?
Just send me an email. I have to prepare a packet for the council.
Okay.
Presenting to the council next and I'll forward it to the commission. This is a study consent for the benefit of the commission. I'd ask, um, through the chair, commissioners have any additional questions? Then, this is not a public hearing, but we can open it up for some public questions after the commission has been done and I would suggest that we do that at that time. Commissioner, any more questions?
Just to give you a summary, pretty much what you're saying is that the overall impact on the traffic is going to be an A level. Three of about two point four, slightly second. And, uh, the way you found that is, one car probably turning.
In a queue, right.
In a queue.
Yeah.
And then, in the other turn, the office, I'm sure you've all saw it, uh, something similar to that. So I don't really see a problem.
Right.
The levels are really low.
If I could piggyback on that, could you just, um, um, review the recommendations though, that you're, you're making with regards to the left-hand turns and is there an additional turn lane and separation? If you could just do that as well. So, as you stated, the overall study is negligible as far as difference, but they are making some recommendations to improve situations. And if you could cover that.
If these are, without the proposed development, there's a couple of things that need to get done that we talked, that we recommend. This area right in here is kind of a rough, it's very rough.
I want to do that here. Um, you want me to show up on there? Yeah, just right here. Uh, okay.
Um, this area right in here, under existing, is difficult and it's, it's very, it's helpful for the operation of the intersection or that approach, if you can get left and right there. And right now, this is real rough and it doesn't necessarily promote that, so we, we recommend that that gets fixed. It's not something necessarily the Golda Corral's cause, that's not the case. It's just an existing condition that should be fixed that'll make the thing operate better.
The radius?
The radius.
Talking about the radius.
Yeah.
An extra lane, a right-hand turn.
But if you pave it and you smooth it out and make it work and stripe it, it'll work better.
Yeah, it needs a right-hand turn lane, this already has a left-hand and a, and a, and a go straight.
Right, but it's not very good.
But, but the right-hand turn lane is, is non-existent presently.
The other thing we talked about that's an existing condition is this, um, the no-left turn for this driveway right here. Yeah. It's, it, we need to have that, um, improved. It's faded, actually it's fallen over into the bushes, at least last time we looked at it, it was. So, it would be good to, you know, there, it's, that. They've actually straightened it up because it wasn't, or it was straight then, now it's not too straight as far as I, as I remember.
It's in about the same condition as all the other signage on that site. Preferably.
Okay, so that's, those are kind of the existing condition situation, um.
And through the chair, Mike, if, if you haven't already, could you just have that conversation with Abe Worsniak? Cause he's the traffic engineer and he could get some priority to get those signs upgraded.
Okay, that's something we will, yeah.
And be, even before this, you know, development goes forward. I'm sure that's something he could swap out with the signs.
Yeah, well, it's not his job to do it, but yeah. It's the county, those are road commission.
Yeah, but it's a follow-up, you know.
Yeah. Uh, and then the other, the recommendation is that they can start their driveway consistent with what the road commission wants. The road commission has standard design practices that they want, that you have to follow, so, uh, we recommend that they do that, which, they won't get a permit if they don't, so. They have to submit their plans to the road commission for approval when they apply for a driveway.
Uh, Mike, let me say, uh, this traffic study, what we've been talking about, this is great. I mean.
Thank you.
When sitting home reading, it took me a long time, because I had to go through it three or four times, I understand it was so detailed. But I think, from my point of view personally, it answered the major questions of that area where the rus- proposed restaurant would be, being able to get out and in. I, I, I was fortunate, great job, a lot of detail, some of that I didn't understand, but, uh, it did prove a lot of points and I don't exactly know what, uh, the, uh, resident questions they asked, but, uh, looking at this, uh, it, uh, does not show that, number one, that any more traffic will be there or the Edmonds would be impacted, in which we knew that there was a lot of problems, it was with the residence in itself and that showed that twenty-seven was going the wrong way, so, uh, personally I think great job.
Thank you very much.
Uh, great presentation.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say that, um, what, what the bell rose up going to Twelve Mile and making the turn, some people are going to do that anyway, when they get used to going there and they see the way the traffic's going, they'll go to Twelve. It's not saying.
Twelve, Edwards.
I mean, they'll go to Edwards, you know, they'll be on Southfield, but they'll go up to Edwards and make that turn where the light is. If it's that congested. There'll be times when it will not be congested and they should be allowed to go in at the, the drive that.
And they're also going to be able to make that turn in the shadow of the signal too. When Northbound stops, you know, the sig- Northbound Southfield will stop at the signal.
Right.
You'll be able to turn in there too.
And the other thing is the residents have that concern with more traffic. That's why they want it just to be, to come in on Edwards only. That's my, that's why I would like you to be able to come in on Southfield.
Right.
From Southfield.
Right.
But, um, when the traffic's really heavy like that, they're going to go to Edwards for the light. So, that's just my take on it.
Right.
Well, thanks a lot, we appreciate you coming back with some good information and, you know, helping us out.
Well, thanks for having us.
Yeah, you're more to the public. I just wanted to say, thanks a lot for, you know, breaking it down for us in more detail.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, great job. I think it made a lot easier for everybody to understand, a lot better the second time around. Now I open up to the public, I'm sure there's lots of questions out there.
And if I could, through the chair, after you've recognized the public, uh, please direct your questions to the chair, state your name and address first and then, um, he'll, he'll direct the, uh, response, uh, through the consultant.
Mr. Chair, my name is Billy Barish.
Okay, stand up for us.
My address is seventeen five-five, Earl Edwards Avenue. And for purposes of drawing, I am, uh, at Edwards Street.
This is Edwards Street. How about, how about up here?
Okay, so I'm the property just east, um, right where your finger is, the area, right where your finger is.
Right here.
And, but I'm representing the voice for the folks along Lake River, um, both south and north of Edwards and the voice of folks east of Lake River because of those are the folks that have been showing up at meetings before. Unfortunately, many of them didn't know about this meeting and, and/or as Terry did, they got phone calls, but, um, the timing was not right for it. So, here's my voice and their voice. The biggest concern that we have as residents is the flow of traffic along Edwards. Now, I didn't hear an awful lot, other than the present, presentation of the numbers, I didn't hear much in terms of what might be done to correct that flow east to west on Edwards. Now, your numbers show that the volume, I'm, I'm sorry, their numbers show that the volume is significantly less than the year two thousand and two. Fifty percent was the number I heard basically. Now, I, I can accept those numbers because they're based on, I imagine, the road sensors that were put up. I, I think it's based on the road sensors, because I remember there were road sensors put up for a period of time, they, they were put up on a Monday afternoon and they were removed on a Thursday afternoon. They were, the road sensors were out basically for about three and a half days, which would, uh, allow tracking the flow of traffic day and evening and night. Uh, unfortunately, it didn't capture this flow of traffic for weekends, you know, when it could be heavier. And it also missed the flow of traffic for the school, which is closed. And it also missed the flow of traffic for the previous business that was there, okay? So I don't think that the number is going to be accurate in terms of when a Golden Corral is built there. Uh, if, if, if you go back to the numbers from two thousand and two, those are, might be more accurate for the flow along Edwards versus the ones for two thousand and eleven because of the, of survey being done during the school year as well as when the office was there. The other concern about that study is that it was done during the summer hours, not only from the school standpoint, but during the summer hours when people are on vacation. So it would also have a decreased amount of traffic flow. So, our concern is the flow that's going to be on Edwards. And by the way, um, one of the things that sort of gets missed, and I don't know how you guys have captured it, how they could have captured it, but once that restaurant opens up there and traffic is flowing west down on Edwards, we're going to have an increased amount of. we're gonna have an increased amount of traffic flow from Greenfield to Southfield to get to the restaurant throughout the day, but particularly in the hours of the evening, when we normally want quiet time on the block, and particularly on the weekends, when we have quiet time on the block currently. You know, because of the business would be, that was there would be closed after, after five, after six, and closed on weekends. So, um, the nature of the restaurant would bring traffic there during the time that we traditionally had quiet time on the block and throughout the neighborhood. And it's gonna increase because, unlike the business that was there previously, the volume from Golden Corral will be significantly greater. And because it will be people coming, not because they come to work there or because they live in the neighborhood, but because they're coming to a restaurant during peak times, we will get an increase there, too. I know these announcers couldn't gauge that, but I gotta express the concern that we still feel that the increase in traffic's gonna be there, and, and it's not really an acceptable situation for us to have an increase. I suspect there will be more than the numbers from two thousand and two. And I suspect significantly more, but I'm guessing, just like anybody else here, because I don't have any data. But, uh, just the nature of the business, uh, will bring folks using the through street of Edwards to get to the restaurant, because it's an easy access. And, you know, uh, an interesting thing, and, and this is going back to a statement that says nothing to do with, with, um, Golden Corral. But I've talked to neighbors who said the reason why that street was changed from a two-way to a one-way was because of traffic. And, but one of the conditions that was quoted to them at the time it was changed was that western would be made into a through street at the next opportunity, which was when the trailer park disappeared, but it didn't happen, too. So, we still have that traffic that was never solved by traffic, uh, uh, plans that, that had come through this group and gone to the city. And now we're gonna have the problem with, uh, Golden Corral that had as a result of the increased flow of traffic when that happened. So, in each one of these cases, it seems like the residents are getting shafted.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make a statement. Um, we're listening and having this meeting tonight, but the things you're talking about now, when it comes to council, that's the time to tell that, because we've already spoken on this. So, and, you know, we're hearing it. But I'm, I'm thinking about what you're saying, we need to, when they have in their study, I don't know what they do in their studies, I don't think they are letting as many people speak, and I haven't seen that hardly at all. But they do have their meetings, so you might wanna make note of the things you're talking about. The only reason I'm saying this is a lot of people wanna come up and speak. We've already had our public meeting, am I correct on that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, this was just for them to present their traffic impact study. So now you've got some of it, and they're gonna still.
Do I get a copy of that?
I can make it up, no, one thing.
So I just wanted to say that, because a lot of people may get up thinking that we still have some say, we don't.
Oh, I, I, well, I understand, that's why I, I said, I realize that their study is done, and here it is.
Appreciate it.
Before we go to any additional comments, I, I, I want to try and take the points of Mr. Parrish and have him address it. Typically, uh, Mike, what is the average, um, volume of traffic on weekends versus weekday? Does it tend to go up or, or down?
The weekends goes down.
Okay, so typically, that the, the Southfield road counts on weekends would be less.
Oh, a lot less.
Uh, then, uh.
On Twelve Mile and Greenfield and all the other roads, too.
And, and, and part of, part of the reason the issue was about school, the school's in session Monday through Friday, so volumes would be up during the Monday through Friday, and down on the weekends.
Right.
And then, I think you already addressed the differences between the former office and the proposed restaurant.
Right.
Okay, so, those were three of your concerns. Now, um, specifically, Mr. Parrish had mentioned the expected traffic westbound from Greenfield to, to Southfield along Edwards. And, and based on standard practices and your review and the traffic counts, what is your opinion on the volume going up or down, or, and the level of service changing when, when this is fully operating? If you could address that to the chair.
Okay, we, we did talk about this a little bit. I glossed over it a little too quickly, probably, and I probably should not have. But, um, we talked about office traffic having a constant destination to the same place. And they're coming to that place at a time when the adjacent street traffic is the worst. They tend to look for places if, if it suits them to cut through in order to avoid delays. Unfortunately, some people do that. Not a lot, not all people, but some people do that. So, they're coming to, uh, their office building when the traffic is the worst, the delays are the worst on adjacent streets, that would cause them, and they have the, the, the opportunity over and over and over again to look for routes that might minimize their, or shorten their travel time. If I'm driving down, and I wanna go to the Golden Corral, and I know that it's where it is, and I'm coming down Greenfield Road from Troy, do I know that I should, and, I'm not going, is there any reason whatsoever that I would wanna lengthen my travel time, or cause the, driving through a neighborhood, I would get off of Greenfield Road and cut through? Or would I take Greenfield to Twelve Mile to Southfield and get there in half the time? I wouldn't do that. I, I would follow, stay on the main road. The reason, the only reason you're gonna get more traffic maybe on Edwards from the neighborhood would be from the neighborhood. The people that know the route, they come that way all the time. So, that's not gonna be a big, suddenly you put the Golden Corral there, and we're gonna have all kinds of cut-through traffic. The office building and routine employees are the ones who, who cause, um, cut-through traffic in places. And frankly, I bet that, that volume has gone down quite a bit over the years, because you no longer have twelve times lower service effort, those intersections anymore. It might be down to three, but it's still, that, so that condition, I don't believe is, uh, shouldn't be a concern. We have the numbers, too, I mean, we, we were gonna go through this. This is, these are existing counts. If you look in the, in the study, this is figure three. Um, remember midday and PM? There's not a lot of people going that way to begin with right now. So, uh, are we gonna get more people coming in and going out right here with our restaurant? Yeah, we have that. But you, you can look and see that the numbers going out of, out of that approach are not really that great. For an hour, that's hour. So seventy, what is it, seventy, seventy-nine cars in an hour.
And, and those are all going west down on Edwards, you're saying?
They're approaching, yeah, they're, so they came from over here, or they came from here.
Most from, yeah.
Most of them from this retail thing right here.
Oh, because of the bank, you're saying?
The bank, yeah. They have access.
Well, there was a, the earlier drawing that shows from Laidrup Street through, and I know, I just didn't.
Those are twenty-four hour counts. So those are the total numbers over a whole twenty-four hour period.
So, uh, did that help you out at all?
Well, well, you know, in the past year, I, I know that they covered the A, B, C, D of traffic flow. And what bothered me was, and, and the reason why I mentioned the one-way street and Edwards Street and through street is, I think that street gets more traffic than any average, as you say, residential street in Southfield. Just because it is a cut-through, and because it's, it's a through between Greenfield and Southfield. So the numbers for traffic are very high just because. I've been on other residential streets in Southfield, and I could sit there for an hour and no cars would pass.
Let me, let me throw a little something out on that one, too, just because maybe, maybe you don't know. But, the average single-family residential housing in the United States generates nearly eleven trips a day.
Eleven trips a day?
Per house.
Per house?
Per house.
I don't.
You don't? I used to. I mean, I, I had, I had times when I had, when I had two or three teenagers at home, I had probably close to fifty trips a day the way that went. But on the average, and that's, that's, uh, that's information to know, is that you're gonna end up, especially if you're a street that kind of leads to a major intersection, or a major road, you're gonna have, the closer you get to the major road, the lower the volume's gonna be, that the people are leaving their houses and exiting the subdivision. So, I don't disagree with the, with, with the other part that, you know, those volumes back, certainly back in, uh, two thousand and two, they were pretty high. But I worked, I worked as the city traffic consultant for the city of Birmingham since nineteen eighty-six. And I can tell you that these residential streets, and the volumes on Birmingham residential streets, they're, they're about the same, that the volumes are what they are. If you, if you're on a, a street with just a few houses on it, you only have a few cars on it. If you're on a street that serves a big, a large neighborhood, you're gonna have more. But none of them are, you know, four, five thousand or something silly like that. If there is, you have a problem, and, and that you need to fix.
Okay, I think we can move on off that point. Yes. I think you made your point very clear.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Oh, I just, I was just concerned at the, which, the distance from the light to the left turn, you know, there.
Can you stand up for it, say your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Red Bunker to, to, to zero one Darner Street. I'm really not that interested, but for the proposed new driveway that allow left-turn traffic, a lot of times you'll come into a situation where there is a left turn, and there's a car that's blocking not only north and south, but straddling the left turn, waiting to merge over to head southbound.
That guy's making an illegal maneuver.
Yeah, well, and several of these cut-throughs are well-known. And with gas prices today, people figure, hey, I'll put it in neutral, I mean, I'll put it in low, I'll drive through this, uh, Edwards Street to get to my restaurant, and not even face that's traffic on tele, on Southfield and Twelve Mile. I'm the kind of person who would rather cautiously, and at thirty miles an hour, ever increasingly with gas prices, we're not talking about getting there fast, as much as we're talking about getting there to save money on the meal economically, and a little more common sense being used, to use what we know are quiet, less likely to be in a rear end on Edwards than you would be on, say, the other two major streets there. This doesn't offer a, how reali, reality works, and how a driveway that close to a stop sign or a red light might cause a.
Mr. Bunker, this is not a public hearing, and we wanna give the neighbors and adjacent citizens an opportunity to speak. And your issue's coming up next, so with all due respect.
Yeah, I, I just come in, there are some conditions and setbacks of business and residential.
That's fair, but this is not a public hearing, and I, I don't wanna get into a long discourse back and forth.
Sure.
Does, uh.
Observation.
Anyone else have a comment on this subject here?
I don't have a comment, but I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Is that, then, two nine four three Southfield Road? Uh, if, if, it would be really helpful for me, you may all know this, because you do this all the time, but I, where is this data from? I, I've heard last week and this week, standard practices about a hundred times, industry standards about a hundred times, and very common. I, it may be common to you, and you may know what all the standards are, I, but it would really be helpful if there were references that we could then look up and see if that's accurate, or where it came from, or. I mean, I've, I've been online, had my assistant online all this last week, and, and looking at, uh, all kinds of information, but there's, there's no way to rebut this information if there's no reference. There's no, and, and again, you may know it all, I, I, it's unfamiliar to me, so.
Through the chair, uh, we'll, we'll take one at a time. Okay, okay. Um, I know the study, um, references ITE, which is. And correct me if I'm wrong, the Institute of Traffic Engineers Transportation. Transportation Engineer. Website today. Institute of Transportation Engineer.
But, but they have about twenty million pages on the website. I mean, is there a, of a, what data, did that come from, what report did that come from, what generation? Is that from what document?
Section of Southfield Road, northbound, southbound?
It's standard, um, from their, um, they, they publish reports on a regular basis, based on averages for certain types of land uses.
But this was a specific number of accidents in, in a year?
That's the second question I'm gonna get.
Okay, okay.
So, a lot of the data that is average standards that they're referring to is from this, um, the ITE reports. And they come out, so they say, um, you know, based on a survey of a hundred fast foods of ten thousand square feet with a certain volume, this is AM, PM, midday, PM peaks, and those are the standards they use. So, the report references that data several times. Then, then there is the, uh, the, in the PowerPoint presentation was the three-year accident data. And through the chair, I'll have Mr. Labadie respond to, to, to where that is. And it's referencing SEMCOG's traffic crash report.
Okay, so that's from SEMCOG.
The accident reports are submitted to SEMCOG by the city. City Police Department has, fills out a traffic crash report for every accident that happens. And annually, actually, it may happen more than annually, they, they submit all that information, and the SEMCOG centralizes it for all, all of the jurisdictions within, in all the roadways, within the SEMCOG.
So, so this is my point, this is very helpful.
You can get this.
Okay, no, it's great, but I just didn't know where. And it's really helpful to see that when the report said zero head-ons, here it shows two. When it said most of it was rear end, here it shows five total rear end, and thirty-two twice.
Don't, 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 don't start that.
No, I'm just, I'm going through the report, now, I'm just asking you to, this is my question, because we were told one thing, now we see it here, and it, and it looks different to me.
Okay, now, Mr. Labadie, if you wanna, or, do you, do you wanna respond?
Through the chair, yeah. The, the numbers are different here than what are shown in the report, because what you're seeing on the screen right now is the entire segment between Twelve Mile Road and Thirteen Mile Road. The report that was, the presentation that was done was specific to the segment of Southfield Road, which we were asked to study, which is between Edwards and the driveway on the west side of Southfield Road to the north side.
What, could we, since we're talking about.
One block span, basically.
But since we're talking about that safety, can we get a copy of that report? I mean, that's what we're talking about, right? I mean, I'm not making any accusations, I'm just trying to understand. I, I just, there's so many times that it's been said, it's real standard, it's real common. How, how do we know?
Through the chair. Since there are about three different reports you're looking for, can we, and Mike just gave you one, and the chair just gave one, give you the web to go on to look at this, so you can see it for yourself?
Sure.
Okay, you just, I need you to write this down, because you.
No, I've got the ITE website, but.
Okay, then you got, you got SEMCO for the traffic.
Right, but.
Write that one down.
It, just, just in all fairness.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
If you went to the ITE website, you could be on there for three weeks and never find this report. If you went to the SEMCOG website, do you know how rich that site is?
Yeah, you have to go down and find the tab, what you're looking for, and tap over, and that brings up that. Now, I'm trying to find, the same thing you did here. That's the same input that we gotta go through, so.
Through the chair, to make it simple, uh, we'll take the, the questions that you have. I'll work with the traffic engineer, and he'll provide me with the websites, and, and I have your contact information. I forward you the traffic study, and I will forward you the, the data sources.
The, yeah, if, if they're citing a specific report on a specific segment of road, it should be available. And we, you shouldn't have to say it's somewhere on the SEMCOG website. It should be, they're getting the information from somewhere, right? Okay.
Well, I'll tell you.
That's just one question, that's just one question.
Get your information.
Okay. Um, second, is, can you go to the slide that shows the opposing properties? It was just before that. Thanks. I, I thought what you asked for last week was to show the impact of the potentially overlapping traffic in the center lane. I keep, I, um, when, when it was being stated that they're improving the situation, because right now, the, the traffic's going here and here, but now they're extending that, so it shouldn't be as bad. And I see several of you nodding their head, and I think, I must not be getting this right, I don't understand. Right now, you can turn left into here, and you can turn left here. Not here, you cannot turn into here. There are two big signs there that say you can't turn into there. So it's not going from here to here, it's getting worse. Right now, it's a left turn here, and a left turn here, they wanna make a left turn here. It's worse, not better. I just wanna make sure everybody understands that.
Yep, through the chair. Well, I understand, and to me, it's, it's adding a turn, so to me, to me, in my little small brain, you just gave two, and when you add a number, you add a cutoff. So I'm, I'm just.
You can't, you can't turn left into here right now.
Right. That was what we looked at now.
You can turn left here.
Right, you're talking about the light, that's.
Now they're adding turning left here.
So does that improve it?
No, so what happens now is you've got cars coming here at forty-five, and then slowing down, getting into the left turn lane to turn here. Cars coming here at forty-five, slowing down to turn left and go into this lane. I don't know about how you all drive. When I go to an intersection, I don't go to the middle of the intersection and then turn back. At the beginning of the intersection, I wait for the light, or the traffic to clear, or whatever, and then I go. So it would be here, and it would be here. Right, so, so it's a much, much shorter area that we're talking about. So, so it's a much, much shorter area that we're talking about. And, and I guess what I thought was, we, it was asked last week, what is the length of a car for queuing? How many cars would this represent while they're moving? And how, how many cars with, what length, and when you're slowing in, what's the appropriate amount of time when you go to turn left in a center turn lane and you're slowing down? How far is that? Because, I mean, it's, they're gonna overlap, I, I think, right? Between here and here? If, if they're turning like this, aren't they gonna overlap? If you're getting into that lane? That's what we're talking about. I thought that's what was coming back.
Again, through the chair, this is the jurisdiction of the Road Commission of Oakland County. They're the ones, they're permitting agency, they're the ones who dictate where the driveway is, and based on their standards, will whether, they'll permit it or they're not. If it's not safe, it doesn't meet their tolerances, it won't be permitted. So, ultimately, regardless of how much debate we have here tonight, um, and I, I'm comfortable with today, the explanation. That doesn't mean we might need, not need to investigate further, but ultimately, it's the Road Commission of Oakland County, they'll make that call.
Right.
Whether it's safe or not, whether it's gonna...
So, so to you, you have enough information to make a determination at that stage?
Ultimately, it's, regardless of I, I, this body or the city, the Road Commission of Oakland County does the permitting on where the driveway location is. And, um, as part of this study, it's an education for us on the volumes, the land use, and those patterns. But, uh, even with the input of the city engineer and the traffic engineer, they can make recommendations, it's the Road Commission of Oakland County that ultimately will decide where that driveway's located. Now, if they say that driveway shall be tw- fifty feet further north or south, that may have an impact on the site plan, which then we'd have to bring back.
Okay.
But if they permit it in that location, it doesn't have a significant impact on the layout, then we're good to go.
Okay.
If they come back and say this is an unsafe situation based on our data, based on our standards, and there shall be no driveway, there shall be two driveways, there shall, they ultimately will control that 'cause it's their jurisdiction.
Okay.
And we, I, we have the control of the Edwards app because that's under city's jurisdiction, and we follow the same standards and guidelines. But, um, part of what this commission asked for is the traffic impact because it was a legitimate issue on, on the, um, on the neighborhoods part. Uh, Mr. Bell has raised some issues from his opinion on how things should be, and other commissioners agree or disagree, but ultimately, as I stated in our study session, Road Commission of Oakland County controls where those go. Uh, the signs, ti- timing of the signals and so forth. And if they say add another turn lane and the developer wants to move forward, he's gonna have to do it and pay for that.
I just wanted to make sure, because I saw everyone nodding their heads when he was saying it's getting better, and it's not at all. I just wanted to make sure, just...
Can I make a statement, I just wanna make a statement. Since you pointed out the drive, the further one that's further up, and he mentioned that, and I saw in my head, I want you to know someone's hearing, that you couldn't make those turns on that, okay? So, that does make a little difference in my brain. I'm thinking you could do that turn, so it is better if you could do both turns there.
Right, exactly, right.
So, I see what you're saying, but I also concur with our planner that the Road Commission's not gonna let anything go there that does not make sense.
All right, fair enough. One last question. Um, it's, just, we're talking about traffic impact, right? So, they said that in that, can you pull up the one that shows the typical number of Golden Corral vehicles per day? So, the, mm, yeah, there was one other one, or was that it? No, that's it. So, the typical is seventy-nine?
No, that's I T E.
Okay, and, right, and, and the Golden Corral, or Chris' Golden Corral is eighty-five?
No.
But you projected ninety-three.
The column?
Yep.
In the center, vehicles fifty-seven, fifty-five. That particulars the Golden Corral based on the number of persons, one twenty-eight and one twenty-four. They have a typical day during those peak times.
Okay.
Which is less than what we forecast with the eighty-five and seventy-nine based on national data published by H I T E.
Just inbound.
Right, okay. So, just, I, I just sat and did some math based on the number of vehicles. You figure you take out some for employees, and then the number of vehicles for customers, times two point two five per vehicle, times whatever their average ticket is, nine or ten dollars, is very generous, I think, per, per person, gets you their annual sales. And if their annual sales are really five or six times what this says, wouldn't it make sense that the traffic then is really gonna be five or six times this projected traffic? That's, that's, and all I'm saying is, everybody here can do that math. I did that math.
Um, I'm sorry. Through the chair. Through the chair. Repeat that potion, five, six times, how do you come up with that?
What's the average sales of a Golden Corral?
Three point six million on computer website of Golden Corral.
Okay, so, three point six million divided by, in, 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 do this math, three hundred sixty... Three hundred sixty-five days a year, divided by nine dollars and sixty cents per person, divided by two point two, well, you can take out the customers or the employees, you don't even have to, divided by two point two five, that's how many vehicles. That's a lot more than eighty-five.
Well, no, that would be a daily.
Per hour.
Per hour.
That's per hour. That's per hour. They, they are peak hours.
And it's, it's per hour.
I don't think that was, at least it was per day. That's per hour?
Per hour during the peak time.
Okay, that's what you're saying. I see, okay.
There's a couple of things, though, that's important, I, I just want to make sure we get this straight. When you get onto the I T E website, you don't get trip generation, you don't get all that information. That, those books with all that information are several hundred dollars. They're not, that information is not on their website, you have to pay the price to get that. So, you won't find that, but the, the traffic crash information you get from the city, you can get it from SEMCOG. SEMCOG's website is cool 'cause you can get on there and figure that all out. You get traffic volumes, you get historical counts, you get all kinds of things off there. It's, uh, we're not, there's nothing secret about it, and we weren't trying to get away with anything. The city traffic engineer knows where all that stuff is, he knows, we, we're writing that for him, not for somebody who doesn't know where to find things, so. And the, the point, it's real important to say it's accepted practice because I don't want you to think that we're making stuff up or we're doing something that's non-traditional.
Okay, we've got to move on.
I, I just have a quick, uh, question. In some previous meetings, there was some questions. I thought the traffic review was gonna also address the question of perhaps closing down Edwards to reduce the impact on the neighborhood, was that a part of the study at all?
Uh, no, I think it was.
What, through the chair, just a clarification, what we asked for is recommendations for improvements, which include that right turn lane radius, the, the no left turn. Those types of recommendations were coming as part of the traffic impact study. So, we, we, we didn't know what the traffic engineer was going to make as part of recommendations to go. Now, if, if for whatever reason, this, this study said there's gonna be five thousand cars on Edwards, which is two and a half times what the maximum on a residential street is, that would have warranted further investigation on, you know, traffic bumps, you know, offsets, changes, and, and those types of traffic calming issues on Edwards. But the study verified that there isn't a severe issue and there's not, uh, one that's expected based on the volumes to trigger additional traffic calming measures on Edwards. But we do got some additional traffic engineering recommendations on how to improve flow around the site. And, and that's, that's where maybe you were thinking about recommendations. We didn't know what the traffic, uh, impact was going to, um, discover. And if they did discover that there was gonna be severe traffic on Edwards, then we would have gotten some recommendations on how to calm that traffic.
Right, well, what I see is the increase overall of fifty-seven, fifty-five, um, per hour in the area, but I suspect that perhaps a third of that, that hourly traffic's gonna come down Edwards just because of the danger of the pass-through. And, you know, it's gonna be an increased problem for the neighborhood. And, uh, at some point, I, I thought that the, the evaluation of whether to slow it down would be a part of this whole study.
Well, the study, through the chair, does not indicate that there's gonna be any significant increase on traffic on Edwards, that's what the study indicates. So, it doesn't warrant any further review at this time.
Uh, yeah, questions?
Uh, not really a question, I had a document from the Oakland County Road Commission on that. That was part of the packet that I submitted to the commission. They have that in connection.
Yeah, right, I've got a question on that, on, on that subject. Okay. What, uh, through the chair, Adam B. on that letter from, uh, the Road Commission uh, refers to, uh, good, just to you, you and Terry, uh, refers to, uh, the hundred and two foot wide half width right-of-way on Southfield Road. I've never heard it termed that way, what does that mean?
Well, um, do you wanna address that, or do you want me to turn it?
Go ahead.
Um, what, what would be the standard right-of-way for Southfield Road, for the chair? Uh, let's see, a five-lane road, somewhere around a hundred and twenty, maybe.
Well, it, it, it needs to be on that right-of-way there for that divided highway. And by understanding was there's adequate land there for that.
But, but we have found on Southfield Road that we don't have a consistent right-of-way up and down. So, that's what, I think that's referencing is that in some places, it, it, we only have, you know, half of, half of the right-of-way is not equal to the other half.
Right, okay, but, so, so the half on the eastern side of the middle, midline of Southfield is, uh, what it should be? Is that what you're saying, by half, by half width from the midline, uh, to, to the lot line of, of this property?
But it says the Road, R C O C master right-of-way plan indicates, this is a master right-of-way plan.
Okay.
Which, they may or may not have it, but they want, what they want.
Okay, well...
Indicates a hundred and two foot half width right-of-way for Southfield Road. The existing right-of-way is shown to be a hundred and two feet wide half width. Please contact SO and SO to discuss that, why in the world it says it's a little bit of a strange thing, right? What they're looking for, so the bottom line is, and that's not really clear, but the right-of-way there that's out there now for a five-lane road is about a hundred and twenty feet, I think. In fact, it usually is for a five-lane. Fact is, though, they need more in order to put a boulevard in there for the plant, the master right-of-way plant. It's kinda like your master land use plant, this is what you'd like to see here, or what it, what it is, and this is where we're going. They have a, Road Commission State does the same thing, has what's called a master right-of-way plan, which is something that they hope to achieve based on what they think their future, uh, road needs are going to be.
And that, that would be two hundred and four feet wide with a sixty-foot wide median.
Right.
We've had some discussion as the city's saying, uh, if you get your full two hundred and four feet, you're, you're in, um, you're making exist, existing parking in the front, non-conforming. Those businesses would lose that parking and they wouldn't be able to operate. With the, what the Road Commission would like is a sixty-foot wide green median. We said shorten that so that you don't need as much right-of-way, you're not impacting their land use. So, that hundred and two is referring to the center line over, they'd like that on the other side for a total of two oh four. And that would, that would accommodate a sixty-foot wide median.
I'm not sure what they did. Of course, your prime...
I totally agree, it's two oh four, and so half width, just half of that, that's a lot of land.
Right, so, this is only being developed on half the size. Whenever they can, they would like the, um, adjacent property owner to donate or to designate that full half width along their property. And I believe that's what that's doing.
That's true.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that's what they're, I think that's what they're doing. So, from here to there would be about a hundred and two feet.
Okay, that's...
Hopefully, if this is thirty scale, looks pretty good.
That's what I was guessing it, but I've never seen it written that way before, so I thought I'd ask. If I could find on this letter, uh, it doesn't have anything to do with traffic, but Adam A. on this says the detention bond should be sized to accommodate hundred-year storm runoff prevention. Uh, uh, why not? Why, why don't we have it, uh, if the Road Commission is saying that it should?
This is a preliminary comment, and the city has their own standard, which I believe is relevant here flood, which that should be sized to. I bet it's ten. Well, I, I, whatever, whatever the city's standards are, this was August eighteen. So, these are preliminary comments, when, basically, when they submit for a permit, then they give detailed information. And again, these are their, this is their wish list. Whatever the city, if I'm misstating, whatever the city's, uh, it's designed to city standards.
Okay, so the ten-year storm is what it's gonna be at?
That's, if that's what the city's standard is. And again, I defer to, uh, my colleagues in the city's and the department.
And the, and the twelve-town string is, uh, is a hundred year, but if the rest of the city is ten years.
Yeah, because that's probably, that's collecting probably from a larger area.
Uh, of the twelve towns in Southfield, it's, uh, it's further to the east of this piece of property, uh, by about a hundred yards.
Okay, anyone questions on the traffic impact statement? Everybody pretty clear, everybody understands it from front to back, right? Maybe we can move on?
If, 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 if it came through the chair, uh, when can we get copies of the updated material there?
Well, I'm just seeing it for the first time, so hopefully tomorrow. And then I'll forward it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job, Mike, thank you.
Yeah. Terry, it's one oh two from there to the back of the slide.
Yeah, that's right, there you go.
So, they're doing what their, what the Road Commission's been asking to do.
I thought that's quite an example, but I've never seen it written that way before. Do you mind if you take a restroom break? And you want to see the whole two hundred and four?
Let's, uh, if we could keep it at five minutes because, um, the other, the last two items will go quickly, but we do have some other residents here, and our city assessor's been sitting here patiently, and I asked him to, to come to address the concerns of the Garner Street residence. I'll, I'll, I'll set up the, uh, the maps. So, if you think it means that your PowerPoint presentation, and then, um, what's that called? Tweet that head-on, right?
I'm sure.
Those questions, someone will get to a person, and I have a question, so, right? And then if you send me the two or three reference sites, and I, I, you know, if you can, I, I really should go to the book. As a matter of fact, I, as a matter of fact, a couple of months ago, I drove them again, and I used your library, and then I photocopied a couple of pages from the book. I don't know, I don't know, I don't use it, I haven't seen it. So, um, I did my own, uh, traffic study, you know, just based on averages. I don't remember even what it was, but, um, I have to do it zone in the channel.
Do you think, you think they're gonna wanna see this kind of PowerPoint?
No, that's what I said.
Just sit there and be quiet?
Yeah, but, yeah, that's right. That's why, it's the volume. No. You're gonna, you're gonna be here for a while. So, I am, I will just, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll try to get other packets, and then if they have questions, you can tell. And that's why I told you. Tonight, we went to the presentation, I just wanted to tighten up the line back. Monday, you're gonna sit there, and if they don't have a question, though, you're lucky, you're gonna get out of there.
Right.
I mean, you, you, you're here, but it may come after. But I don't wanna overcomplicate it.
Yeah, here is the, uh, city planning committee's always great.
Maybe just something like this one on that head-on set.
Yeah, thanks, it was real wet out there.
And that's for, in case if you have, if you have to throw it up on the...
What time did you finish it all?
Yeah, okay, and they're, and they're gonna have, they're gonna have, you know, I may or may not do that PowerPoint here in the past. I'm good, I'm good at drawing runs and comforters in my area. And then hopefully I'll get an indication of how much information you want to tell me before.
Are we supposed to be there, thirty minutes, one hour?
Yeah. Um, actually, it's actually, but, um, I'll let you know for sure whether or not they're gonna have six times the earlier than, you know, it's four. But if you want us to come to that, you can help. No, I, I know that, but I'm still, I'm, I'm...
Some areas, I hope, Tom, for the chair, could be...
Generally, since you're already gonna be there, maybe the hall, especially the hall members, I think it's, it's double duty, they don't wanna sit. And that, and that, then, and you put your time in.
It'd be very difficult to make a swan for all.
Yeah. All right, yeah. You know, the pain, the labor pains are money, that, that delivery is, is better. All right, thank you very much. And I'm, I'm back here on Friday, so if we need to...
Better get it done tomorrow.
Better get it done tomorrow. Chair, do you, and do you need the actual.
Updated to put in a major or a slide in the official to address.
Right now, I just say the slide.
I agree.
Because I give them a full chance. If they ask for it, then prior to the public hearing.
I just want to make sure if you need another document.
What you can do unless you hear from me, just go ahead and send me the power point.
Yeah, I'll get those first.
Yeah, for something, and then just send me the two or three sources that I can report. And again, Mike, you got, you got a three presentation.
All right, especially, well, are they gonna let it, because the council or the state? I mean, if somebody gets up there, yeah, my concern is, I mean, if you get up there. Oh, but my concern is that if you don't get up there and play back, somehow, I mean, that's, that's the game you're playing.
That's, that's my goal.
And we'll go along.
Now, but this is a new map for me. I don't know why I have this.
Oh, the other project. What, what's that?
Uh-huh. Okay. Okay, back in order. Uh, the next item is item two, Garner Street rezoning preliminary discussion. Uh, those are the commissioners that were here last week, and I know we have two commissioners here today. Just briefly, uh, there, the, um, yeah, this, this is, north is up Telegraph Road, Garner Street. This is Bradford Academy. Uh, there are seven two acre parcels on the south side of Garner Street. The residents have approached the city, asked for our consideration for rezoning from residential to either a neighborhood commercial and or light industrial type of use, or some combination thereof, to give them some relief and give them the better ability to sell their property because the character of the neighborhood has changed due to the charter school academy. Amount of traffic, uh, the types of uses, land uses and so forth. And I, from my understanding, when the charter school was originally approved, it was a phased approach where each additional year they were adding a grade as, as the kids moved through to ultimately through twelfth grade. So, um, the intensity of the traffic and with older kids driving themselves at a certain age, there's been more increase of traffic. At some point, the city tried to prohibit, uh, traffic going through the neighborhood, so they've made this one way out. There's circulation problems, there's other issues. What we're here tonight is to, um, have a preliminary discussion on whether or not it's warranted to consider rezoning this. And at some point between now and maybe next month, if we feel that it's warranted to rezone from residential to some other category, then we'll set up a formal process in a public hearing and make a recommendation to city council. Since our last week's meeting, I've contacted the traffic engineer. He says there has been previous studies done in the past, traffic counts. And since we know that traffic has increased as the school has gotten larger, I have requested a traffic count. It'll be a three day count. And sometime between now and our, our meetings in October, they will issue the count, and then we'll compare and contrast it to previous years of count when the volume is probably lower. And that might show a trend where traffic is increasing. Um, we have Mr. T here from the assessor's office because there was some questions and concerns about whether or not, uh, if these properties were rezoned to a business classification or industrial classification, would they increase the taxes and ultimately increase the property value? And we may or may not be able to separate those. And then I see we have a number of the residents here. Uh, we heard a lot of testimony last week. But, um, since, um, Mr. T has been here patiently, I'd like to give him the first opportunity to, to make a brief presentation. We've given him some preliminary questions, open it up to the commission for further questions. And then if time provides, we can get some additional comment from the public, although this is not a public hearing. Okay? Mr. T?
Okay, my name is David T. Gerena. Everybody has a little bit of trouble with that, and they just say Mr. T. The, the thing is that I've looked at several different scenarios, and it's, it's really difficult to try to determine a value of before and after value because there are too many variables here. The, the, the first thing is, will it be resolved? And, and if it's not, then, you know, the point is moot. But if it is changed, uh, I'm thinking if, if this is all commercial, uh, it, it would, it would be a, a likely use that, that the school could use that for something. Uh, or the industrial, uh, is, is Maxitrone, I think it is? Yeah, they, they could probably expand, but I don't know if they would be able to use all that. And you'd have to look at the master plan as far as, uh, how far back all the other properties along here have any use for the property.
Dave, that, that's the master, the future land use map.
Okay, so most of those are, are only two or three hundred feet deep. So for the, this land to go even deeper, it's away from Telegraph, uh, you start to lose a lot of value. The only real value is within the first two, three hundred feet of Telegraph. Once you get beyond that point, there's, the, the value drops off dramatically, so.
And, and Dave, before you go much further, my, part of the consideration might be two or three parcels are zoned industrial, and then the, there might be another three or four that's some type of business, and then maybe even some are, are left in residential or buffer zone. So it's, it's not necessarily all or nothing.
Right, and another issue here is, is the density of the trees here. That, that, whenever you have that thick a set of trees there, there's likely that it may be not as buildable as the, the frontage, or, uh, I don't know. So a lot, there are a lot of variables, and, and to ask me, you know, how much is it gonna be worth after? And there's just too many variables in there.
Okay, that, that's one question for the chair, but one of the questions, um, that the residents were concerned is if, uh, if they, they remain in their house, but it gets rezoned to a business or industrial, would it change their tax, taxes?
Yeah, the, the, the value of the first, like I said, two or three hundred feet is gonna be the most. Uh, the, the next issue up, up to about where that road would be going in would probably be the highest value. And then the rest of that would be probably pretty close to where it is now, unless there was some definite use for this area. If, if I knew that there was, you know, specific use, that that was going to be put for, then, then I would say, yes, there's, there's more value there.
But through the chair, would, would their property taxes increase just on the rezoning itself? Obviously, if the industrial builds are expanded in there and they use it for industrial uses, that would affect the property value. But if it remained residential in use, although the zoning's changed until they can sell it, does it change their taxable value?
Yeah, the, uh, the taxable value would increase. There, there's, the, the difference between the commercial, uh, land values and residential land values is substantial enough that, that there would be, uh, uh, an increase. I, I had looked at one of the parcels, but, uh, that was based on having the road go through, and then the rest of the land would be excess land, so.
Through the chair, yes, if it was rezoned, but they were at a lower tax value, and then if the value went up, would they still just be fixing up like it does if the value of the property goes up?
Well, uh, unfortunately, the, the values of properties in Southfield have been running down.
Oh, I know that, and you can only bring them up like six percent or something like that?
Well, residential values have been falling a lot faster than in commercial.
That's not, that's not the question. I know that since they dropped so dramatically, growing up, there's, it's gonna be a slow pace going up. They may have dropped thirty percent last year. But you wouldn't raise a person's property taxes up thirty percent in a year. Isn't there some type of?
There's a ceiling of five percent for the rate of, of inflation, whatever's less, right?
Right, you know what I'm asking? If this was rezoned, would they just automatically have to pay what the new value is?
No, if it's still the same ownership, uh, they would go up by the consumer price, wouldn't they?
That's what I wanted to know.
That's, that's, that was what I wanted. Yeah, that's, that's the heart of that.
Mm-hmm.
Couldn't go up more than five percent.
And that's what they needed to know.
Or.
Well, or whichever's less, right.
The max would be five percent.
If the value went up to say a hundred and fifty thousand or something, two hundred thousand, they still, it still has to take time to, to go up if that was the common act. Because I think they would be uncomfortable being caught in a catch twenty-two, and the next thing you know, they got seven thousand years.
The assumption, assumption value would go up, but the taxable would only go up a small amount.
Okay.
Through the chair before we get too, too far gone here. Uh, would it, would it make sense, uh, to make a recommendation such as, uh, be open to rezoning it to, uh, whatever, commercial, light industrial, uh, or a combination of such? But only, only with a condition, with conditional rezoning, in other words? Uh, and do not activate, uh, the potential, do not implement the rezoning until there is a site plan or at least, uh, a buyer. Because whatever, if we were to just let out, rezone it, whatever developer comes along, he may want another use for it.
That's true. However, through the chair, the existing conditions and, and will give the, uh, the neighbors are intolerable to the residents as they sit. Their, the market value as residential as it sits doesn't provide them the opportunity to sell their property. So they're looking for some relief through rezoning, and they're willing to take a chance on a general rezoning. And I agree, conditional zoning, if you have a specific project in mind, we could consider that. I think what, what Dave had said is probably the highest and best value of this property is if this road goes through, then those who are lucky enough to be in these two parcels would probably increase their value, potential, potential value the most because these could be combined with the frontage and industrial. The ones over here, not so much, from what I hear, although they probably would, would increase to a certain extent. I know that, um, there has been talk of the school possibly developing this for athletic fields, or maybe it's additional school, the road through here. Definitely now, you start to have, um, property values that become more because you've got more road frontage. So, you know, part of our discovery and recommendations might be a rezoning, but also the road going through, and, and there's lots of different variations that we might discover as we go through this. It's, it's probably more likely that this is not all gonna be industrial or all gonna be one thing. It's probably gonna be a combination of things based on how this ultimately gets laid out.
And, and the key date for me is December thirty first of each year. Whatever the status is on that day is the way that I would assess it for the whole following year. So if it's not rezoned, uh, by the end of the year, I would, uh, still leave the assessment as residential for next year.
Any other cautions from commissioners? Over to the public, any caution, any concerns?
Uh, really minor.
Again, through the chair, through the chair. Mr. Bunker, if you could just stand up and identify yourself.
Two four two zero one Garner. And as it turns out, the meeting we had with the school last night indicated they had really, uh, brought their interest to a halt, except to maybe add a second lane to exit Telegraph or something. Nothing that really impacted us, which that carrot that was the football stadium and the, excuse me, ideally scholarship, this charter school, they're gonna have to have scholarships to compete eventually for college bound students. So we naturally assumed that they're gonna put in a Southfield high school-like, you know, sports activity since our school techs, designers are at work here. And we're kind of crossing the crossfire of, you know, understanding it to be a, a funding of a, uh, uncertain source to a degree of this expansion. They're focusing more on educational academic, and so the school idea was out. But, uh, we also thought maybe the road could be brought in and somewhat of a, uh, like on Telegraph, I mean, on Lasser, those tech parks that come in, kind of like industrial park, and service a, a circular portion of acreage or whatever it took to, uh, tech team. Is that at eleven in Lasser? They have a large kind of a complex that is basically single story and, you know, covered a lot of square feet. So that option, you know, and then with Maxitrone, their, their property comes down to here. We thought even they could introduce a Telegraph exit entrance here, block this off permanent, build a wall across here. There's a, like you said, there's so many variables that you can't limit it. And that's why when we moved in, I did twenty years ago, is proposed light industrial. I don't know if proposed has some semblance of what Mr. Bell spoke of as a precondition kind of whoever we can get, throw the line out there, and whoever nibbles, we can, um, offer them the idea that we pre-approached and kind of set somewhat of a motion that would cover our behind in our hopes that we could leave Southfield, um, here sometime soon.
This is a clarification, and this is just a preliminary study. But if we were to go forward with an official zoning, we'd have to know what we were rezoning it to. But then, the public hearing process would be, uh, everybody within three hundred feet, and our, our, our standard is three hundred fifty feet of that entire rectangle would be notified. So the businesses within three hundred fifty feet could weigh in, but also the rest of the neighborhood could weigh in, and they may not necessarily agree with what, uh, these residents want. So we might come to that point, and we might get further input. And then, um, you know, the whole proposal with, with the road going through, I think ultimately probably makes that property a little bit more valuable to everyone. But, uh, those are things that we have to take into consideration. Okay, thanks, Wes. Anyone else?
How many are those lots?
Two acre lots.
Six hundred and sixteen feet.
Six sixteen by how much, Dave?
Uh, well, Mr. Bunker's one forty-two.
The big problem, I think we talked about.
I think it's less than a thousand feet, all seven lots add up to six ninety-eight.
We talked about this a couple of months ago. I think the big problem was, uh, neighboring Garner Street. But just, uh, looking at it quick, I don't know if you don't want to live on Garner Street, or if you take a road, I don't know, so, you know, the property, what your property is now, it'll help that.
And then you get, and then you get your neighborhood ceiling like everybody else in the neighborhood.
You're off Garner Street, and then maybe that other half or whatever, you know, portion you want on Garnett could then be rezoned.
So, so through the chair, you could come up about a halfway point, come down, put a cul-de-sac in, use this as a buffer.
a cul-de-sac in, use this as a buffer, and have the houses here, is that what you're indicating?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, can I say your name?
Yeah, Dave, two three two nine one El Maron Street.
Um, excuse me, can I get this out of your last name?
M A R O N T A T E.
And your address?
Two three two nine one El Maron Street.
And where's that located?
It's right around the corner.
Just west of there, aren't they?
Okay.
Uh, the idea of putting residential in that area is totally, uh, unrealistic. Uh, the zoning allows only like two, two houses per acre, and you'd have to put five hundred thousand dollar homes in there to make it profitable for a builder, uh, to build anything in there. The idea of, of anything that's, except high-tech, it just leaves a fine effort to train you in. There's not gonna be a major subdivision, residential in Southfield, since Green Dorplein went up, that was nineteen sixty-two.
Thank you.
Well, I just, um...
Your name, please?
Down Happy, down Jim, two four three, five five Garner Street. Um, one of the reasons we have this horrible traffic is because it's a charter school and there are no buses. Everybody is dropped off by their appearance, and mostly maybe one child in a car, so that's why it's such a terrible condition.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I think, uh, I'm, I'm speaking out loud here. The city council has even talked about realizing since that charter school has been there, there has been an issue, and that's been an ongoing issue that, um, no immediate resolution's been in place. But let me, let me understand something. We're looking at possibly rezoning that area, right? So, I understand where you're coming from, 'cause you're that first house on that corner, so they... Now, I'm, uh, second, okay, aren't you, you are here? Okay, all right. So, we're looking at the rezone, we're talking about if you rezone half of it or a portion of it, then that may put you in a better financial position down line if they come across. So, what Mr. Bell was saying is, the ask question, I'm speaking for you, if, if we rezoned, we need to, to put out what type of rezoning in order for it to make it profitable for someone to come in to walk that area, right? Is that, is that what I'm thinking, I just wanna know what I'm voting on for one of them? Okay, all right. 'Cause there's gonna be a problem that charter school is down, because we haven't come up with what to do with that charter school with the traffic, but we need to look at whatever we decide to make it profitable, and that is enough for you to get some of your property. Is that where we're going? I'm sorry, to the chair, I, I, I just wanna know what I'm voting on.
Commissioner, like this, you want to... I have another idea for you, uh, group, if you're looking to do something like this, maybe you approach certain developers and do this on your own, and, uh, maybe get some interest, and then through that, then maybe we can go through this process.
Certainly make it easier and possi- possibly faster for everybody, uh, 'cause we, we can make suggestions with the developers to one that's, that's gotta, that's gotta want to.
Down, right, same with you.
No, no, I don't think you want that.
Thank you. We've done all the developers, we've gone through all that, and we had one that spent seventy thousand dollars, um, plans and...
Southfield, definitely.
And, and it just never happened.
You could've made ten thousand.
But we, our lots are that narrow, you know, that bowling alley, we're landlocked, and, um...
My apple was a closed plan.
Developing it into, um, cluster housing.
One base zoning.
One base zoning, and it was like cluster, and, and one developer was even better for the seniors, a senior area for seniors to live, and, you know, it was, you know, maybe even...
It would've been beautiful if you guys ruined it.
We, we did tech.
No, I think it was you, Mr. Bell.
Because I, I was one of the team that was...
We have a feeling with the council, again, through the chair, through the chair, it is, um, it was a different market time when that was proposed, and unfortunately, it's not the same market.
Which I know for ten years. Retired by the time I was...
Just before the school, like, like a year and a half.
It's in school, like three years, like that.
Okay, well, we should do that.
Yes, we went through all of them, you know, then the school made us an offer, we owned four acres where the high school stood, and, so, we went ahead because we've gone through all this for years and trying and trying, and then, of course, the neighbors yelled and hollered, "How did this happen? How did this school come in here?" And they opposed us doing anything, 'cause they didn't want more traffic, like two cars for help, you know what I mean?
It's for everything for green, all kind of nothing for us.
So, we went ahead and we just, and we hit, and we live by the school, because it's a, it's a, we're, we're trapped in our own home.
Thank you, Wes, for your comments, that's, that's all I'm coming to be, uh, taking on.
Just to touch on the traffic of two thousand being a problem at all, or whatever, the, the Edward Street people had to speak, we had that before eight-thirty in the morning, we have two thousand cars on our street, so when the shift changes, it's two thousand this way, if we're gonna do a traffic study, maybe we should put the counter in the middle of the street here, 'cause oftentimes, this traffic, once it's in the parking lot, goes this way, and this way, and this way, substantially creating numbers of trips back and forth in front of our houses, rather than just what the traffic here would be measured, as we saw with Mr. Northrup's efforts when he monitored the traffic.
Yeah, well, we are the traffic school.
You have anything else, Dan?
Well, uh, the, the one word that I keep hearing over and over and over is if, and until I know it more or less specifically, then I can't really answer, uh, an evaluation.
We appreciate you coming in. Appreciate the time.
Thanks for having around.
I'll be around for a little bit.
Appreciate it.
That, that don't mean to cut me a late mine.
Uh, if I, if I may to get the conversation started, uh, something that Mr. Bunker mentioned a while ago, that, uh, either I was just blind to it or wasn't made aware of it, but the, the property that, uh, to the east of running Telegraph, that actually, the property line goes all the way to the south property line of the, uh, of the, of the residential streets there, or the residential properties, uh, that does kind of open it up as far as, uh, another potential access route, uh, to get to this property, uh, putting in a, a roadway from Telegraph, uh, along that south property line of, what'd you call it, Maxitrall?
Maxitrall, yeah.
And, and then coming into the properties in order to make it, uh, to put a roadway in there without using or, or going on to Garner, uh, which would make that, uh, those, uh, residential properties potentially more developable. Uh, I think, I think that needs to be looked at a little bit more seriously, uh, in, in fact, we need an area that looks more like that, uh, uh, this, this one is too confining to, to show it very clearly. Uh, uh, of course, by having that conversation, you actually need to have a conversation with the owners of Maxitrall to see if they'd even be open or something like that. Uh, uh, but as far as what, i- i- I think I, I think I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, you, you can't really rezone a piece of property, uh, with conditional rezoning until you've got a project, because, okay, that's, that's enough of that conversation. But, but, but that's, that's the reason I would have a difficult time agreeing to rezon this to anything without knowing what was being proposed to go in there, because whatever we rezon it to, a developer comes along and says, "Well, that's the wrong zoning for what I wanna do."
Right, but there, there's different things that we could do. Uh, we could amend the master plan, right now the master plan says residential, which lays the foundation for future rezoning without actually obligating to a specific zone.
Sure.
And that's why, this is just a study session, we don't control the property, uh, but it's not, um, it's not unusual for the city to do what are called corridor studies or specific area studies and make recommendations based on market conditions to help spur development, and, and we could, we'll do that certainly through master planning, that lays the foundation for a rezoning without hanging ourselves in a corner, and, um, and we can even come up with conceptual plans to have available if the developer's interested in looking at it, and we're going through this process. So, again, this was to give an opportunity for the residents to weigh in, for us to study it, I've ordered the traffic study, uh, not study, but count, and hopefully have that information available, and at some future study sessions, we'll, we'll take this up further based on comments tonight and other information.
I'd, I'd be very open to doing, to do that, to, to, uh, looking at this as, uh, I was trying to finish my thought on, uh, I thought you were just answering a question that I was throwing at you. Uh, uh, but I'd be very open to looking at this as far as, uh, with, I'll at, at least look at making a recommendation for changing the master plan, uh, because this, the way it is, without access off of Church Street or off of some other route besides Garner, it, to me, is no longer developable as residential. And, and that being said, un- unless we, uh, uh, want to come off of Church Street, and, and I know you're gonna have a massive problem with the people on Church Street if you make that the access route, uh, uh, but making an access route to Maxitrall, uh, uh, to me, sounds like a possibility of doing something without disturbing the, the relatively very nice homes on, on Church Street, uh, rode down through there the other day, and I was just amazed at the number of really nice houses in there. Um, but, but I'd be very open to, to looking at a, a combination of things as far as changing the master plan for that area.
Okay, Commissioner?
I, okay, I need to clear my mind. I'm in, going through my little brain, I'm in conjunction with opening this up for rezoning, even though I know, Commissioner Bell says you need to know exactly if there is quote-unquote amount available, but to me, what I'm hearing is, these residents are trying to get the best bang for the buck they can, and they are hoping that someone will come in, they wanna do some commercial, or they'll do something in that area to buy their house. So, to me, if I throw a carrot out there and say, "Now, we have rezoned this area for the possibility of commercial," whatever they decide, t- to me, whatever they decide to come in and do will benefit these residents, 'cause what they wanna do is get away from up under this, they wanna sell. Now, I'm not familiar with Church Street, so I'm only gonna speak for Garner, and I, I don't know how far down it goes or whatever, but my thinking is that I would like to maintain a thought of opening this up for rezoning to give some entrepreneur or somebody the opportunity to come in to do something with that property, to relieve these residents that in that area need to get out.
And the only thing I can answer, the chair, is that we have a business development manager, and we have realtors, and, and, and when someone comes and says, "I'm looking for X amount of site," if this, let's just say, there's a total of fourteen acres, let's just say ten acres for the sake of argument is now in light industrial, then, uh, someone comes and says, "I need X square feet of building and parking, and I need a vacant ten-acre site that I can build new on," and now this comes up on somebody's radar, that there's this ten-acre parcel that's virtually vacant, that's, has the proper zoning, then someone might be more inclined to, to do something with it. If they find out and we say, "We got this fourteen-acre site that's residential, it's got some homes, you gotta go through a ninety-day process to rezon it, to amend the master plan, and then you gotta come through site plan," someone might walk away, and that's the only, it's the only reason to do a blanket rezoning without a specific project, is that if we can determine that there's a need for, uh, two, five-acre industrial, light industrial sites, we are much more likely there's a market for it, or maybe there's a need for some type of research technology for X acres, um, then, then it might make sense to do some rezoning. I think at least it's worth amending the master plan with some concept plans that help might spur it, or might go a little further and say, "Yeah, maybe the first eight acres or the eastern eight acres should be rezoned light industrial, and the others should be put into some transitional zone to protect the existing neighbors." That might help, it might, but we won't know that until we go through this a little bit, you know, further. Good afternoon, Mike.
Uh, uh, one other aspect, uh, uh, as opposed to just doing a master plan change, if you went directly in and changed the master plan, 'cause we need to change the master plan anyway if we're gonna make a rezoning, and, and so if we did all of the master plan, but if we went directly in and, and rezoned, say, half of it to light industrial and half of it to some other, uh, zoning, uh, we're stuck, if whatever the developer wants to build then, we don't have any control, if it's, we, we need to rezon half of it to light industrial, anything that's allowable in light industrial, they can build. We don't have any control of it. I don't want that, that, that close to residential, because if you rezon the first four acres, I mean, the first, uh, the first four lots, uh, uh, to the east, every one of those are but the Church Street properties, that's residential.
So, now you can be going there to do, uh, residential in there.
No, what I, what I'm talking about is that you're allowing any kind of, of light industrial in there right adjacent to residential.
However, just through the chair, Mr. Bell, we, I mean, we could say, uh, a fifty-foot green belt bumper and keep it residential.
Fifty foot's not a number.
Whatever, whatever, you know, I'm saying, we don't have to just do a cart launch, I mean, we can do it to be, uh, obviously, we'd be sensitive to the existing neighbors, so, I, I think, I think for tonight, for the sake of tonight, um, we're gonna come back, and we're gonna study this further, and we're gonna do, um, and try to get some, um, response from the stormwater, from engineer, from the traffic engineer, so we have more data to share with you, and, and at some point, we'll throw some trash paper down and come up with some concept plans that you talked about, and have further study.
How close do the business development department work with us? Do, do they tell you?
We mean on a weekly basis at a minimum, but any time that, uh, Ms. Freeman gets contact or a type of use, she, she's working with our office to say, "What do we have available?" She has data, and then we look at the zoning and see if it's a permitted use, do we need to rezon, so, if there's a, a viable project, we're talking that day. Well, we have, um, at least one to two weekly team meetings where we're sharing information with each other, so she's aware of this, and this might come up as, um, you know, vacant residential on someone's search, but she's very familiar with Garner Street and this property, so if somebody came and says, "I need a fourteen-acre site, light industrial, and I'm gonna create three hundred jobs," uh, she'll be in our office saying, "What do we need to do to do it?"
That's what I wanna hear. Yeah, let me close this, thank you. Okay, I, uh, to Mr. Bell, I, I'm not as familiar with the zoning as you are, my only concern is, I didn't know about, uh, what's the street you say?
The church.
Church, I didn't know about church. My only concern was that I want us to look at something that would relieve the people on Garner here that's trying to get their houses up, that, that was my only point, 'cause I didn't, I didn't know about them further, so I just wanna be on the court here. Whatever rezoning to do, I'm not that familiar with the rezoning yet, but I will get there. I know it's just for the commercials.
That, that's just it, we've gotta be both.
Yeah, yeah, I wanna get there, but my thing was trying to come up with something to get them some satisfaction, since we had to set them and look at their property and all of that, so, I'm through with it, all that, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, uh, you know, we have a goal of trying to be out of here two hours on study session, so I'm gonna make these last two items a two-minute, uh, drill. Okay, since, since, uh, Ms. Hamud...
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, your guy.
Since, since Ms. Hamud is, uh, a do-not show, and this is only for a preliminary discussion, I'm gonna defer this to next month, an architect that was supposed to be here to talk about special use of adding a pharmaceutical in, in, uh, like, uh, two five one three oh Southfield Road, okay? Um, it was too late to have the official public hearing, so this is only gonna be a very preliminary discussion, and for whatever... be a very preliminary discussion, and for whatever reason she didn't show tonight, so there's no sense wasting any time. We're going to have her come back in October, so we, we can move on with that. The other item, and I, I do want to spend at least two minutes, because some of you have that hairline enough, it might be familiar, but, um...
This doesn't have to be the same guy that almost talked about three years ago, did it?
No. Well, it, it's part of that, because, because here's, here's to the point. The city owns three parcels on Eleven Mile Road and Greenfield. And at one time, the history was there was a gas station, and it was a brownfield site. They cleaned it up, and they converted it into grass, green area, with the hope that someday, uh, it would be made part and parcel of this shopping center, and that, uh, either an out parcel or this shopping center would expand, that, um, there'd be more parking. I don't think anybody's intent on a, on a busy intersection is to keep it just green space. Because of, uh, the fact that property values are down and money's cheap, all of a sudden, we have two interested parties in the property. And in order for them to move forward, uh, they may need a rezoning, they may need a special use, they're just definitely going to need a site plan approval, but the city owns the property, and they, and city administration and business development says, "I got two letters of interest, letters of intent, to competing, um, uh, site plans that I can't divulge at this point, but they said, 'How do we go about selling city property? We haven't sold city property in a long time.'" Start with the planning commission. Have them make a recommendation on, on the site. When I get an official submittal with a concept, then I can, I can tell you what it is, and then we can discuss the, the merits of that. But I, I wanted to at least plant the seed, uh, for October, that there are two interested parties in the site that want to develop it for various commercial uses, and, um, when I, when we officially get those letters in hand, then we can at least start discussing, you know, those potential, because you might come back and say, "No, we want it to be a park," or "We want it to remain green space." I don't think you're going to say that, but, uh, the challenges are access onto Greenfield Road and access onto Eleven Mile Road with the existing here. Uh, they may or may not have a cross-access easement, we would certainly recommend it, we would, we wouldn't want additional curb cut, at least on South, Southfield is, uh, Greenfield is controlled by a road commission, Eleven Mile, I think, is by the city, because the county owns the even ones, right? Uh, so we may, I mean, we may allow, uh, an additional driveway point, and then, you know, recommend a cross-access easement. Um, there's all kinds of things that could happen here. But, um, from what I'm aware of, it's at least two types of retail restaurants, you know, the variety that would go on a corner. Leave it at that. And, and, uh, we will be coming back, uh, through October at study sessions, and we may or may not even take it further, but, uh, we're going to be asked to make a recommendation to city council on the sale of this property at some point in the near future. And again, we have two competing interests, and first one in, first one in, uh, you know, gets, gets in, in line.
Set a prime location.
Yeah. But for some reason, it's sat vacant, and, and you might know, for, for quite some time, right?
Right. Uh, a part of the reason is city council's, uh, insistence, uh, at that, at the, at the corner there where you, where you've got the bush there, uh, remained as an entrance marker to the city. And the gentleman that, that had made an offer and was about to buy it about three or four years ago, uh, made a spectacular presentation, uh, to city council, and this, it went to city council first, this study session, before it ever did a site plan, uh, because he wanted to test city council. And what city council was throwing at them was, because it was a, a very well-off, uh, landscape architect, landscape guy, that had a massive business in the metro area, and, um, so he had the ability to do all sorts of things, and the council kept saying, "Well, why don't you do this?" And what it wound up was about a quarter million dollar worth of landscaping that they were saying, "I want you to put in there," and which was, uh, more than double what he is intending to do on his property. And so I think he went away.
Right. Dave, not to put you on the spot, but you know what's roughly the, uh, value of that property maybe? Okay, maybe could you let me know by next month sometime, by next meeting?
I presume since it had a, uh, service station on it at one time, that it's V three currently. Uh, but, but, uh, but anyway, be that it's made, uh, you, you said it was commercial enterprises, so it was most likely, uh, that's what the proposal would be, would be some type of V three or, or some type of business use, I would have probably assumed.
Uh, it's actually Zon Neighborhood Shopping.
Zon Neighborhood Shopping, which is V two, I guess.
N S. Maybe apply for a master plan? No, this is, um, designation is N S.
Yeah, uh, which, uh, uh, to, to me, uh, ma- making that, that corner V three, I wouldn't, I don't think, know that I would have a, a problem with that off the top of my head, but...
What is it now? V two? It's N S, Neighborhood Shopping. Now, V three would open up the gas stations, but this is one where if we had a specific use of conditional zoning, it would protect us, and that's what I probably would recommend, but...
Sounds like...
I think, from what I remember, they would need to have it rezone to something for the two proposed uses, but, uh, and that's, that's where the conditional zone could come in, because we could protect ourselves from not allowing a gas station if we went to V three, for example, but it's all very pie in the sky right now, because we don't have, I don't have anything legitimate in front of me that I could do V two. They are very guarded because they're dealing with franchising and privacy issues, so they couldn't release it other than I know that it has potential being some type of retail restaurant.
Because I know there's, there's a service station, gas station, uh, on the south side. Yeah, and, and of course, right, that's right, over, over in Oak Park, or, you know, Oak Park, that's a, that's a service.
Okay.
Anyway, no, appreciate you.
Any notes?
Okay. I appreciate everyone's time. The minutes are, um, and, 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 correct me if I'm wrong, but we provide the minutes in advance so that you can officially adopt them at your public hearing.
Yeah, I know that we have a long list of minutes, Mr. Bell had some changes, I think the other people did, so if you could email them, to Doris, maybe, for your changes specifically?
Send them to me.
To you?
Yeah, because she's on here a couple days a week.
Okay.
And, and for now, at least filter them through to me, and, um, I just want to say we don't have anything official for the regular meeting, so we canceled that meeting.
Which one?
Uh, next week. And then we'll pick up the minutes, because, um, with this other project and another thing, we will be having a public hearing in October, so we'll just pick, pick those up instead of me, and again, it's up to you. I don't think we want to convene a meeting, just adopt a meeting. No, not me convening, just me.
Does, does anyone know what the meeting schedule is for next month? I know the, the eighth or the fifth, twelfth, nineteenth, twenty-sixth, uh, but I, I was informed by, by my boss today that we're probably going to be going out now, a lot of us.
She tells you too, huh? I give it to you.
And, and I haven't checked it, because, um, here's, uh, here's the planning commission.
Every week.
Okay, October fifth and twelfth are study sessions. Nineteenth is a long-range study meeting if necessary, and that's where this, um, Garner Street would be more appropriate if we're ready. And then on the twenty-sixth is the regular council meeting. So we have potentially four meetings, but I don't think we'll have four. Two, nineteen and twenty-sixth. Well, somewhere we'll have a study meeting, and then we'll have the twenty-sixth meeting, okay? And it really depends on, um, this, uh, Mona Hamud, if she gets her act together, and we'll schedule something.
Okay, so the public hearing's not until the twenty-sixth, that's correct.
Okay. Yeah, and I'll, I'll officially send out a cancellation notice for next week, or whenever our regular scheduled meetings are. I think we didn't have a long range. In fact, I got it right here. So we were supposed to have a long range, uh, a regular meeting on the twenty-first, and no long range this month. So I'll be canceling the twenty-first meeting, and the next, realistically, we would meet is the fifth of October.
Okay, uh, just to let you know, the, the date that I was given, say, it may change, but it's the nineteenth that I'll, I'll be out of town.
Yeah, I, it's unlikely at this point we'll have that meeting.
Well, if you have objections, I'll make a motion.
Don't make no motion.
I don't.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that as a, as a tool, um, cancellation, uh, adjournment. Very good.
I'll practice that first, then the second. Yeah. You may, you can stay for two minutes. You can keep on two hours.
Okay, thanks again, Dave.
Thanks, thanks, Bob. Good to see you, buddy.
We'll get your name correct.
Yeah. We're always going to see you those, uh, additions, you got those, those corrections on the meeting.
Oh, corrections.
So we can have the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, most of them were.